We are taking roll call. Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Gueda.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Present.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Ashby will be tardy. And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here, thank you very much. Would everyone please rise and ask Councilmember Chenier to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Good afternoon, everyone. Members, members of the city staff, and of course, members of the public. We have our agenda this afternoon is mostly centered on items relating to the Sacramento Housing Authority. Start with, and some direct city-related issues. Let us begin with the consent calendar, items one through five. Are there, any members want to remove any items?
I'll move consent.
That was moved by Councilmember Gueda.
Jennings will second.
Okay. That's, we do have one caller on the consent calendar.
I have one caller on the consent calendar. May I have my caller, please? It appears our caller has hung up. We have no more callers on the consent calendar.
Okay. Let us then, we've got a motion in a second. Let's call the roll on the consent calendar, please.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gueda and second by Jennings. Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gueda.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Use your lines because we're getting a lot of feedback from some of the office. I'm not sure which ones. Thank you. Okay, let's go to the public hearings. We've got item six. Who is presenting on this?
Hi, this is LaShelle Dozier, Executive Director. We have presenting on this item.
Can't hear.
Oh, sorry, can you hear me now?
We may have a, for the first time in the history of Zoom, we may have some technical difficulties.
Okay. All right. So, Ann, did you want to go ahead?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and Councilmembers Ann Nichols, Management Analyst.
I'm sorry again, I don't mean to keep interrupting. It just, the volume is not good.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Better, that's.
Okay. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and Councilmembers Ann Nichols, Management Analyst with SHRA. Staff is requesting approval of the Villa Hardin and Coral Gables Development Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, tax-exempt bonds, pre-development loan, loan commitments, and disposition and development agreement for the sale of the three vacant parcels. In 2016, SHRA's vacant lot disposition strategy was approved. The comprehensive plan guides the disposal of vacant Housing Authority land for the development of affordable housing. A request for proposals of the three contiguous vacant lots on Coral Gables Court was released in 2018. This site is immediately adjacent to the existing Villa Hardin Affordable Housing Development. The John Stewart Company submitted a proposal for the substantial interior and exterior rehabilitation of the existing 44 affordable units built in 1964, along with construction of 38 new affordable one and two-bedroom units, management office, community building, playgrounds, and other amenities. The developer and property management agent will be the John Stewart Company. Life steps will provide onsite case management, supportive services, plus 15 hours of resident services per week that include a service coordinator, an after-school program, social services, and enrichment programs such as workforce development. The financing structure of the proposed Villa Hardin and Coral Gables Development includes a pre-development loan of $500,000, a $2.8 million loan commitment for construction and permanent gap financing, Housing Authority seller carryback loan, 38 project-based vouchers from SHRA, HCD multi-family housing program funds, tax-exempt mortgage revenue bonds, 4% low-income housing tax credits, conventional loan deferred developer fee, general partnership contribution, and fee waivers. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the acquisition, construction, and permanent financing of the proposed Villa Hardin and Coral Gables Development. SHRA staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I think we've got one or two callers on the line, correct?
That's correct. I have two callers on this side.
Go ahead.
First caller, please.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the City Council meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Caller, can you hear us? Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Margaret Miller, and I'm with the John Stewart Company. And I just wanted to, I'm here available for instructions if there are any, and calling in for that, but in general, just want to say we're all very excited and supportive of the actions in front of you today. Hope you approve them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Okay. I think we have Councilmember Warren up to speak.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And my, I want to, I'm going to recuse myself, and I don't see the city attorney there, but maybe she's on the line, but I have had, I have had involvement with this project dating back some 20 years, and out of abundant, I have no economic interest in the project at all, but I want to recuse myself out of an abundance of caution.
Thank you. You have Assistant City Attorney Ruiak on the line.
Okay. Well, I'm going to recuse myself, so I don't know that anything else is required, so.
I think that's, that abundance of caution is always appropriate, so Councilman Warren won't participate in any part of this discussion or decision. Councilmember Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a very important project for our district. It sits right across the street from the Pinell Center and the shelter that's going in. It's been a problem, a property for years and years and years. John Stewart Company has been a good partner with us on several projects like Providence Place and Phoenix Park. They're going to provide services to the residents. They have places to recreate as well as meeting facilities. We think this is a great project, and I would urge the council members to vote aye. With that, I move to close the public hearing and move the item.
Councilmember Carr, we also open and then close the hearing, please?
I move to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Thank you.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Mayor? I may take roll call.
Let's call the roll, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren is recused. Vice Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gueda.
Aye.
Have Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Of course, yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Let's move now to item seven. This is the SHRA annual budget.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Susiana Jackson, and I am the Chief Financial Officer here at SHRA. I am here to present to you the 2021 budget presentation.
Okay. Are there questions? Well, go ahead.
I was waiting for the, for the slide.
Go right ahead.
The budget process typically begins in June and extends throughout the summer months with the final proposed budget officially adopted in November. Typically, we would have multiple budget workshops to provide an overview of revenue trends and projections, as well as presentations specific to the Housing Choice Voucher Program, public housing, and the development apartments. This year, due to the coronavirus pandemic, the agency has received an unprecedented amount of funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Some of these funds must be utilized in 2020. Due to these time restraints, the agency is focused on using this funding to support the organizational goal of protecting core services to the greatest extent possible by delivering housing and public service programs. As a result, staff has prepared and is recommending a roll-forward budget for 2021, which adopts the appropriations, revenues, and the use of fund balances as recommended and approved for the 2020 budget, with a few exceptions I will explain on future slides. This slide represents the revenue estimates that were used for 2020 and now for the roll-forward for 2021. The total estimated resources necessary to fund projects, operations, and programs for the agency is $211 million. The agency is comfortable with these estimates because typically, we use a conservative approach during the budget development process when estimating revenues. Therefore, even in the COVID environment, the agency remains confident in these estimates. Also, since the agency does not typically receive funding from general fund from either the city or the county, the agency is also confident in the state and local funding estimates. With the roll-forward budget, what has changed? The 2021 proposed budget recommends a total expenses of $213.3 million, which is an increase of 1.4 million or 0.7%. The change in annual budget appropriations is the result of increased salaries, benefits, public employee retirement obligations, as well as changes in NEFTEs, mostly attributed to staff that were approved throughout the year for the homeless services department. As you can see comparatively, the remaining categories for operations capital projects remain consistent with 2020. With that, we request approval of the agency 2021 budget, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there questions from members? There are not? Is there public testimony?
I have no callers on this item.
Okay, then, let's take a motion in a second on, on the budget.
Mayor, with the 0.7 increase from last year to this year, totaling $1.4 million only in salary and benefits, and it being a roll-forward budget, I would like to move approval of this budget.
Okay.
Second, the agency.
Second.
Can we open and close the public hearing, please?
I will open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, let's call the roll then on the, on the item, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gueda.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Okay, we move on to item number si, item, I'm sorry, number eight. Who's presenting? Which item? Okay. Who's presenting on this, please?
We were muted, sorry.
Can you hear us now?
Not well.
Can you hear me?
That's better.
Okay. So I will start over. Okay, so again, Susiana Jackson, Chief Financial Officer with SHRA, and I'm here to provide the 2020 budget update. So as you may be aware, the coronavirus has changed budget outlooks across the nation. SHRA was considered an essential business, and we quickly adjusted our operations to maintain acceptable service levels to the public while protecting employees and vendors. During the development of the 2020 budget, adjusting operations due to a worldwide pandemic was not anticipated. Expenses for the 2020 have increased, including items such as purchasing personal protective equipment, or PPE, for employees, as well as purchasing hand sanitizers, cleaning supplies, performing deep cleaning, purchasing new technology to allow for staff to telework, and providing paid leave to the employees through the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Luckily, Congress passed the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, also known as the CARES Act, to provide funding to prepare, prevent, and to respond to the coronavirus. This funding included funding for public housing agencies to enable them to maintain normal operations and take other necessary actions during the period in which the authorities were impacted by the coronavirus. HED's total supplemental appropriations for the nationwide HCV program totaled $1.25 billion and $685 million for the public housing program. What does this look like for SHRA? Overall, the agency will receive approximately $3.6 million that is divided as follows. The HCV program administration to date has received a little over $1.9 million. The public housing program overall will receive $1.7 million. Broken down between the city and county, the city public housing subsidy will total approximately $1 million, and the county will receive $2.5 million, which includes $667,000 of operating subsidy and a little over 1.9 for the HCV admin. These numbers do not reflect the additional funds that have been allocated to the agency through CDBG, ESG, and HAPWA, which were brought before you previously, and updated action plans, which totaled $9.6 million. Additionally, the agency will receive an estimated $22 million in emergency solutions grant, 10.2, which is allocated through the city, 10.2 million, excuse me, that is allocated through the city, while 11.8 million is allocated through the county. These funds will be available to utilize beyond 2020, and plans are currently in the works for how they will be utilized. So additional funding resources that is available to the agency is, was made available through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA. FEMA approved the agency's request for public assistance, and this approval allows the agency to prepare individual project applications for FEMA. The total amount available to the agency is to be determined. We have previously provided budget estimates and the budget approval for 2021, and I'm available for any questions should you have any.
Okay. Are there questions from the members?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
I'm sorry, I can't hear who that is. I think both Mr. Guerra and myself. This is Jason. Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, thanks. I just, I wanted to ask, I know that there's been a lot of effort to, to address with the coronavirus in, in our locations, but do we know if we've had any, have we been able to keep track of if there were any cases and how we've responded to get information out to our, any, any of the family members in our community? And if there have been cases, how have we addressed the issue of the density in those areas?
We have had a few cases of residents who unfortunately have tested positive for the coronavirus in our elderly high-rise buildings. In those particular cases, then we notified everyone in the building that we had a positive case, and then we had to follow up and do thorough deep cleaning of the entire building from top to bottom and, and all of the touchpoints, elevators, hallways, handrails, all of those types of things. And that has happened on a couple of occasions in the areas, like I said, of our elderly high-rise. We have had some of our residents in our family developments. There's only been one or two who has told us that they tested positive, but they didn't live in a congregate type of facility where we had to do that level of deep cleansing.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Chenier?
Thanks. LaShelle, thank you for the presentation, and I'm not sure if I'm in the right place here, but if you could point me to the available funding for the shelter on Broadway WX and where we are funding-wise for that.
So that funding is not included here. That is included on the city side of the budget equation. They provide the funding. It comes from the HAP monies, and so that's not in our budget, it's in the city's budget.
And is that for the operations as well?
Yes.
So I'd ask the city manager if we could get that detailed within the next couple of days, just so we can get a point in time on where we are.
Okay.
Thank you.
It, it might be an appropriate time for me to just sort of point out and preview sort of what's coming over the next week in, in a very, very positive way. The Housing Authority, LaShelle and her team, our economic development team, Danielle Foster, as well as our homeless services team led by Emily Halken, my office, and I'm sure a number of your offices as well, have been working very hard over the last month to essentially align all of the, the myriad of funding sources that we have for homelessness now in our city, from the CARES funding, to the ESG funding, to HAP III, to the state CARES money, which is $600 million and ready to be applied for. We'll maybe talk about that a little bit later in the agenda. And so next week, next week, we are going to have a council, more than an item, could be a full agenda, on how we align these myriad of sources, together with the Five Point Plan, together with Project Room Key, together with how we shift people from room key motels into permanent housing, to report back on WX. And, and here is the, you know, sort of the, the bottom line, the tease, so to speak, for next week. We, we have more resources than we have ever had. This is good news. And so our opportunity next week is going to be to align those resources with many of the demands that are out there, and obviously with the goal of bringing, as I've said for many years now, bringing thousands of additional people from the elements, the sidewalk, the parkway, to, to real shelter and real roofs. And so I'm really looking forward to next week, and this is a bit of a preview. All right. Is there a motion in a second?
Yes, item is receiving.
It's just a report.
Correct.
No need then. Okay, thank you. Coming attractions. Here we go. Let's move now to item nine, which is the, the Emergency Bridge Housing at the Grove. Ms. Dozier?
Yes, we have Sarah O'Daniel is going to give us an update on all of the exciting things that is happening over at our Emergency Bridge Housing at Grove. So, Sarah.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Sarah O'Daniel, and I'm with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, and I'm here to provide you with an update of the Emergency Bridge Housing Initiative on Grove Avenue. Just as a quick recap, Mayor Steinberg had requested SHRA in the last couple of years to explore the option of having tiny home villages or cabins within the city of Sacramento. After much due diligence and a willing property owner, we worked collaboratively with the city to establish the Emergency Bridge Housing at the Grove, or EBH for short. Staff worked quickly, and in February, we received approval from you to have 24 cabins placed on a vacant parcel on Grove Avenue, adjacent to St. Paul Church of God and Christ in Council District Two. And this was to provide emergency shelter to 48 unsheltered homeless transitional aged youth ages 18 to 24, using the Housing First model. SHRA and the city applied and received state funding to pay for construction, operations, and staff costs related to this initiative. Pastor Joyner from the church has been a tremendous partner with us. He recognized the need to help the homeless and stepped up. In addition, there is a strong partnership of community-based organizations that are working together as part of this youth initiative. There was quite a bit of construction that had to take place, grading and leveling, removing of a house foundation, tree removal, new fencing, emergency road access, and all of this was worked collaboratively with the city to create a great partnership. There are four portable restrooms and showers, they're combination units, and one all-inclusive ADA accessible unit onsite. Laundry services provided, and three meals are brought in. There are trailers onsite for administrative offices, and there are security cameras on the property that are monitored onsite 24 hours a day, seven days a week. In addition, the adjacent church is also the site for a food bank pickup location, so the youth can supplement their meals if they would like. In fact, we just heard that some of the youth are actually volunteering at the food bank right now. Regarding entry to the program, we work with partners to develop a youth-centric coordinated referral system. Between the Continuum of Care Sacramento Steps Forward and service providers that specialize in youth services, including Wind Youth, Waking the Village, and Lutheran Social Services, there is this coordinated system. There are no queues outside the gates waiting for a cabin or services. Our operator is First Step Communities, who are onsite 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We will continue to keep the surrounding community updated with the shelter operation, and we are also working closely with the city depart, city police department and impact team to keep them informed. But to give you an update, we, everything that we said we were going to do and plan to do is onsite right now. We have cabins that have air conditioning, which is a good thing, given the current climate right now. We have the gate built. We also have a gazebo shade structure that is onsite, so that the youth, when they wake up, they have somewhere to go and sit and not just sit in their cabins. The site opened to the youth on June 10th, and currently, because of the pandemic, we only have single occupancy, and we have 24 youth on the property right now. Once the pandemic is under control, we will go back to double occupancy. So I wanted to first give a big thank you to Councilmember Warren for leading and supporting this initiative, Pastor Joyner for being such a great partner, the operator First Step Communities for their perseverance and working with the youth day in and day out, the youth partners Sacramento Steps Forward, and the Village of SHRA that made this happen in such a short timeframe. As they say, pictures speak a thousand words, so I wanted to share with you a few pictures and then a 30-second video. This is an aerial shot of the cabins and the church right next to it. This is an aerial shot of the cabins and the church right next to it. The cabins. Picture of one of the rooms. Here are the bathrooms. We also have security cameras and a security cabin as well. And we will have a short video. This concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Great presentation. We appreciate it. And very, very exciting. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to just give a big shout-out to LaShelle Dozier, Sarah, the SHRA team, also to St. Paul and their congregation, Pastor Joyner, who has been doing great community work basically all of his pastoral life. Also, I want to just say to the District Two community, who I see as continuing to lead on these types of very challenging projects that can be very sensitive in neighborhoods. This project had very little or no community opposition. We had a community meeting, and the people that came out understood how important it was that we continued to fight for people who need help the most. And this is just another example of our city helping to do the right thing. Also, I want to thank our mayor for pushing and fighting and making sure that we had the resources and then making sure that they were efficiently implemented. And so, and to all my council colleagues who supported the project, I think it's very important. And again, it's just a shining example, I think, of a wonderful situation in our city, and hopefully more to come, because much, many more are needed. So I will, I don't think this requires a vote, does it?
No.
Okay. Well, Sarah, you got my vote anyway, okay? You did an excellent job. Thank you very much.
Alan, thank you, Councilmember Warren, for pushing so hard. And to SHRA, yes, great, great job. This shows what is possible. And, you know, to just tease again, you will see next week, we will have the opportunity to expand what SHRA and Councilmember Warren are doing in District Two throughout the city, because there's going to be a major allocation in the recommendation for more efficiency housing units, which has to be part of our overall solution. So this shows how it can be done. Good stuff. Let's move on now to file item 10.
Councilmember Carr. Hold on. Ashby, have comments?
I apologize. I'm sorry. Councilmember Carr, go ahead.
Yes, Sarah, could you go back to the static overhead shot?
Yeah.
Not the, not the moving picture, but the static shot. And I'm not familiar with the site. Can you walk me through what I'm looking at here?
Yes. So, can you see my clicker here?
Yes.
Okay. So these are right up front here, these are offices right here. This is community space. We have a security cabin right here, so people come in through here to the security. We have the bathrooms and the showers over here. We have gazebos, and then we have all the cabins lining the back.
Okay. And up top, beyond... What am I looking at? What am I looking at behind the church? That area, behind the church, towards the grass, to your right, to your right.
To my right. Right here?
Up, upright.
Oh, up here? This is E49.
That is what?
Right here is the park. It is E49.
E49. Does that have an English translation?
E49 is a project that the church had worked with previously. It's similar to tiny homes that was located there for the past few years.
And then behind that, the green space is an actual park.
Do people live in this E49?
The residents who previously lived there are transitioning out.
And then you take those over after that, or where?
Excuse me?
Do we take over after the residents who are in there move out?
No, that is still under the property of the church.
And that's separated, physically separated from the cabins?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Pro Tem Ashby.
Mayor, I just also wanted to say good job to LaShelle and Sarah and team here on this one. And did I hear right? 24 occupants? The 24 young adults that were previously homeless now housed in these units? That's fantastic. It's really good work. And I also would love to have a copy of that video, and I hope, as Councilmember Hanson and I often try to remind folk, please, please give that to our PIO and help us tell our story better here. We need to tweet that out and put that on social media and let folks know some of the good work that we are trying to do and that people are being helped and that this is where dollars are being spent. So I hope that will go out as well. And great work to everyone at SHRA. You guys turned that around very quickly. I remember working on this recently as November and thinking, oh, boy, this is going to be a tough turnaround. I believe this was originally started way before the pandemic as one of Gavin Newsom's early wins. And now, of course, we've moved on to, you know, dealing with COVID-19, but you guys still kept your timeline and you did a wonderful job. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is there anybody else?
Councilmember Jennings.
Councilmember Jennings, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to also acknowledge all those who were involved in the project, SHRA, and everyone who made this possible. But I also want to take an extra amount of time to just acknowledge Councilmember Warren. And I want to thank him for his leadership in making something like this happen. And to have no community opposition, to see the project now and the way it looks. I took pictures of every picture that I saw on the screen. I took a copy of the video, because your leadership now has spanned throughout the entire city of Sacramento. And people want to know more about this particular project, and they want to know if it's possible to be able to do it on their five acres that they have within their church sites or their community-based organization sites. They're seeing these kind of things happen. They're seeing 24 youth being housed with the potential of 48. They know we've got these kinds of individuals who are unhoused in their communities, and they see this as a solution, and they want to know more about it. And so I sent, I gave everybody your two telephone numbers, your personal telephone number and your work telephone number and your office telephone number, to let them know how they could contact you and SHRA in order to be able to get some of this into their community. So I just want to let you know, you did a great job on this, great leadership. This is what we're supposed to be doing in our districts in order to bring hope to those who feel like there is no hope, who feel like there is no housing, who feel like there is no support. And this is an incredible project, and I want to thank you personally for your leadership.
Yeah. Give them Mayor Steinberg's phone number, though, not mine.
No, it's already done. I already did it. It's too late.
He put the fuel in the tank. That's all. We just tried to drive the car across the finish line, that's all. Thank you, though, for the kind words, Councilman Jennings.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson?
Councilmember Hanson, yes.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I know that we've given you the keys to the car on this item. It is really, and I want to thank Councilmember Warren as well, because we had a tough vote to make.
Steve, stop it. I can't take anymore. Stop it, Steve. I just can't take it.
Okay, turn off your microphone and just, you know, listen for a second. But we had a very tough decision to make when the pandemic hit, and you and Mayor, you and Councilmember Warren made the decision to postpone this for 30 days. And we came back and we made the very tough decision to prioritize this project. And I think the results from staff and on the ground is really important. Finding those slots for TAY youth is critical, but also, I think, modeling how a tiny home community can work. The scale of this seems absolutely right, 24 cabins up to 48 individuals. And indeed, I think it's become a model now as we try to find scattered sites to build similar communities on. Certainly, First Step isn't the only organization looking to do it, but they have been a pioneer for a long time, and I think they deserve our respect and admiration, as well as the church and SHRA. So I just wanted to give Councilmember Warren and the mayor his due props. And Councilmember Ashby, I remember you were a big champion of this as well, so congrats,
very good. Does anybody else want to thank Councilmember Warren?
They might take the keys from you, Mayor, if you go.
Councilmember Warren, thank you for your leadership on this.
That's good. It's really good. I mean, and you're right. I know, and I'll own it, I hesitated for a little bit, not only for the reason that I just wanted to make sure that we had the resources to be able to follow through on some of the projects we had already committed to. But I will tell you, it was absolutely the right decision. I thank all of you, my colleagues, for pushing me in that direction. Absolutely the right decision to go ahead with this. And again, as you'll see next week, we've got a lot of resources coming in to be able to do even more. And so, way to go, everyone. Terrific. Let us move now to item 10. Housing Choice Vouchers.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. Sarah O'Daniel again, with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. And I'd like to share with you a new initiative that we have undertaken in the Housing Choice voucher departments to help our families and landlords, given the pandemic that we are in with the onset of the coronavirus or COVID-19. The Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or CARES for short, was signed in March of this year, and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD for short, provided housing authorities with regulatory and monetary relief to pay for existing and unanticipated costs to assist both our families and our employees during this time. We created an incentive package of $500,000 to attract new landlords to the Housing Choice voucher program, so we can help our families be housed and lease up in Sacramento County. To put things in context, we house over 13,000 families on any given day, and we have over 57, and we have over 50,000 families waiting for housing on our waiting list. On any given day also, we have about 700 families who are looking for housing. These individuals and families cannot find a unit to lease up. We also know that there are very few vacancies right now, no evictions or notices being given, which is all a good thing, but a challenge for our families. And of course, the market is still competitive. Also, our families don't have funds to pay for application fees or security deposits. To help our families find a unit and be housed, we want to attract new landlords. So our goal is to recruit new landlords and provide resources to our families to help them be competitive on the market and to increase the housing options for our families. We do want to point out that these incentives that we've put together, we weren't allowed to use our regular Housing Choice voucher administrative funds. And so we are utilizing these funds to provide this incentive, and we must spend the money by the end of the year, by December the 30th. So we have a very short window. So we have put together six incentives. The first incentive is a $2,500 one-time bonus for a landlord who has not participated on our program in the past 12 months. This is a signup bonus made available immediately, once the family leases up. We are also offering a one-time bonus of $2,000 for any landlord who left the program with the, within the last 12 months and would like to return to the program and make units available for our families. And again, this is a signup bonus made available once our family leases up. We also have what we call a no-loss bonus. As you know, we serve over 13,000 families, and many are leasing up on a daily basis, and we receive a lot of documents that need to be processed. So for our new landlords, we are providing sort of a no-loss bonus, which is a proration of the contract rent to hold the unit. So from the day we receive the landlord's paperwork to the date the housing assistance payment contract is made effective, we will pay that amount. And the maximum that can be received is one month of contract rent. We have also heard from our landlords, both in the past and currently, that they wish there was access to a damage claim fund. Some units are damaged by our families, and landlords have had to use the security deposit and much more to bring the unit back on the market. We will pay up to $2,500 per unit for damages that are over and above the security deposit. And this is to repair the damages that are in excess of the normal wear and tear. We will have, sorry, that's it. On the other end of the spectrum, we also want to help our families, so not just our landlords. We have also heard from many families that they have a hardship coming up with funds to pay for their application fees and credit checks. We will pay up to $150 for each individual or family unit. And hopefully, this will help them get their applications in and be approved to find a unit. The last thing, we also are providing our assistance with paying for the security deposit for our families. We know that that is also a hardship that our families face, and we will pay for a maximum of one month's rent, as many families don't have the funds to do so. As mentioned earlier, this is a $500,000 incentive program that we have in place. The funds must be expended by the end of this year. We are marketing the program as much as we can through social media, through our portals, flyers to our residents, the California Apartment Association, good old Facebook, and lots of other ways as well. We launched the program in July, and we have already received a lot of interest. We have eight landlords that have signed up, and we are continuing to see that momentum build up. So we just wanted to share that with you, and we hope that landlords will be interested, and we can help our families as well find housing. This concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions you may have. LaShelle just asked me how landlords can sign up for the program. We do have, they can... they can go to our website at www.shra.org to our landlord page and there is information there on how to sign up, um and there is a direct phone number and um an email address as well and um all that information is on our website. Thank you, this concludes my presentation.
So do we have questions on this, members, or do we have public testimony on the voucher issue?
I have Councilmember Hanson signed up to speak and I have one caller on this item.
Let's hear from the caller first, please.
Thank you, caller please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you to the Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. My name is Shereen Miles and I'm a leader in Sacramento Area Congregation Together's Homeless and Affordable Housing Local Organizing Committee. Um, in March, Sacramento Act launched the mini-grant program to provide emergency financial aid. Um, over three hundred families applied and two hundred were awarded grants of approximately five hundred dollars, mostly to help with rent totaling over a hundred thousand dollars. We followed this program with a listening campaign to our applicants, speaking to over a hundred individuals who had lost most or all of their income. It included restaurant workers, hotel housekeepers, hairdressers, gig workers, others in the service sector. We asked about the challenges they faced before the pandemic, which almost always included their struggles to find housing they could afford. Most told us they had filed for relief under the eviction moratorium, but all were deeply concerned about what they would do once that ended. None of them reported having the savings to provide them with a safety net. We are deeply concerned that many of these low-income renters will not be returning to gainful employment anytime soon. As a result, there are likely to be hundreds of our families becoming homeless in the next year. It's urgent that the council direct staff to bring forward a renter relief program for the council to consider. The state may or may not enact legislation to help, but the city needs to implement a suitable program at the city level in conjunction with county and other cities. Failing to do this will mean we are turning our back on human suffering and allowing many hard-working city residents to fall off the cliff to homelessness. The downstream cost of failing to act will be exponentially more expensive than helping. We urge the council to act proactively and request that we bring back a proposal for a program for rental relief for city residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, I have no more callers.
Okay, let's hear from Councilmember Hanson, please.
Uh, thank you Mayor, I just, um, I wanted to thank staff for bringing this forward. It's a, it seems to be a very innovative um idea and a model program. I know that competition is, is tight for units and these Housing Choice vouchers because of the process related to signing up for them and maintaining them, reporting, everything else can deter some folks from wanting to participate. So I really, I think it's a great program LaShelle, you and your team have come up with. Um, and I would suggest to my colleagues, and I know a couple of them have brought it up, but we should continue to consider um providing a similar program using our CARES Act dollars, but to help renters in distress. Uh, I think that's what the caller was referring to and while that's not this item, I, I continue to think that's a very good idea. Um, lastly, LaShelle, I just had one question, given the five hundred thousand dollar expenditure, was the authority in the budget we just passed, um and that why you don't need a motion here, given the dollar amount, or is there some other authority that we've given you that can explain that? Otherwise, I'd be happy to make a motion.
We already have the authorization. We already have the authorization um to move forward and because of the tight deadline, um that's why we had to get the program up and running and out the door, so, yes.
Okay, well, great job, I think it'll help a lot of families and you deserve credit for thinking of it.
You're welcome, thank you.
And if Councilmember Gera signed up to speak?
Councilmember Gera.
Uh, thank you Mr. Mayor, yeah, I also agree with the Councilmember Hanson about looking at assisting uh some of our renters, particularly those who haven't been eligible for other forms of assistance uh now and uh and who are, who are struggling. Uh, LaShelle, if uh, if we encounter some of the apartment owners or property owners who have vacancies or have space, uh what, uh who, is, who should they reach out to specifically or how can we coordinate with your office to maximize any available vacancies that could participate in this? Particularly some of them that maybe have, they're, you know, a few, a few vacancies, but they wouldn't normally look for this type of resource.
Mm-hmm, yes, so they can actually go to our website, www.shra.org, uh and then there's a landlord uh kind of portal that they can check and it has all the information about the program. Or you can um just, if you run into anyone, shoot me a quick email or text and we will have someone call them and really walk them through the entire program and how they can sign up.
Great, well, thank you very much, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilmember Carr.
Thank you Mayor, uh Councilmember Hanson and uh Gera, and I had brought this up before on rental assistance. Uh, it, it's been said that we could spend the entire CARES Act funding on rental assistance, but there are people who have fallen through the cracks, who aren't eligible for um any of the programs that are currently being offered. If we were behooved to move in such a way, what might a program like that look like and what are the potential costs associated with it? Any ballpark ideas or numbers?
Um, so in my experience of looking at some of these programs that have been launched in other cities across the nation, it really varies depending on how much money is available. Um, some cities have done programs that were somewhere around fifteen million, um others have done some that were around five million, so it really depends on how much money uh that the city has allocated and set aside, but I know that in pretty much all of the cases, um, once the money was allocated, um, the demand far outstripped uh the funds available. So there was never a, a lack of people who really were in desperate need of it.
Well, I don't have a, a number in mind, I don't know if Steve or Eric had a number in mind. Uh, I was thinking maybe five million dollars we could set aside for this program and that would be administered SHRA. Is that what you're thinking Steve?
Uh, five million, sounds right, um, I don't know who would administer, I know, um, sorry to go on a little bit, but I know we're getting a variety of forms of money and the mayor talked about that debate coming next week, so I think this is sort of an opportunity to think about that, but um whether SHRA or the city, we've developed a variety of systems, so I would defer to LaShelle and Howard to tell us how to do it best, if, if the council goes down that path.
Sacramento Act uh also has kind of been working on this and looking at other models, I think we might, I mean, both some of the folks have been doing some research on this to look at what other models there are. Yeah, you're right, we're not going to be able to, with the amount of money we have, but whatever we can do, we probably should have an obligation to do what we can do for, as you mentioned, those who fall through the cracks.
I think if we're talking additional money, uh, I would, let, let's make this, let's incorporate that additional discussion in next week's discussion when we look again at all the, the sources and, and the uses out there so that we can prioritize as a, as a city council, that would be my suggestion.
Sounds fair.
What? Okay.
It sounds fair.
Okay, very good. All right, we, we do have a motion on this.
This is, this item is a receive and file and Mayor Protem Ashby has comments.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to ask LaShelle, LaShelle, I, I think I got part of this from the back and forth there, but um I understood this to be uh something you are bringing back at, with the package next week, is that right?
Yes, I think the, the mayor has, has done a lot of, given us a lot of teasers about next week, um, so yes, that is a point of discussion that we would like to bring back uh to the council next week.
So as you're putting your thoughts together and including this feedback that you're hearing from colleagues and obviously Councilmember Hanson and Gera and Carr have already spoken to their uh interest in this, I too am very interested and I know I have heard you uh in the last month or so, Ms. Dozier, talk about how a rental assistance program would be really helpful during COVID. And I, I guess I have two concerns, one is on this item and one is sort of a little beyond that, but I, I too would like to see a large amount of money, I'm not even sure five million is quite enough, I'd love to know what you think the number would be, but maybe that's close, um, somewhere, somewhere around there, that we can help people who are gonna have trouble paying their rent and keep people housed because that is much cheaper than trying to find housing once they are unhoused and prevention is, is obviously key here and we would love to, to do more to step in that gap, but the other thing is just timing, right, we're, it's August and, you know, we need to spend the CARES money by December and this seems like a way that we could spend it quickly and effectively and efficiently to help people and I want to make sure that we do that and I know there's lots of things being discussed and there are even things that this council has already voted on with the CARES money, but I don't know whether they have been implemented or not. For example, I've asked multiple times about the St. John's and City of Refuge money that was allocated by this council months ago, but still hasn't manifested in contracts with those two entities, both of whom need it by the end of this month. So my question is just, when you come back next month, if you could work with the city manager and on what funding is available, whether it's because we haven't spent it yet or we're not going to be able to spend it, but let's find programs like this, and there's no doubt in my mind that SHRA, the Sacramento Housing Agency, is the right entity to oversee a rent kit, a rent program for us, so rental assistance program for us. So I, I just want to echo, I think, my colleagues, but also talk to you a little bit about gathering some more information, will you come back next week to us, about what funding is still available from the city and then bring us a robust package and that we can compare against other things, but I think this is a significant way we could help a lot of people.
Okay, absolutely.
If I could add something really quick Mayor, I, I think the bringing back kind of where we are overall on CARES and, and revisiting the timeline on that would be appropriate if we can do that next week as well.
That's what we're doing.
But, yeah, not just, okay, so not just housing, everything else as well?
Yeah, the, all of the, well, yes, we're gonna get an update on the overall CARES allocation, but next week's a specific focus on housing and homelessness and I promise you, there will be a robust, working with uh our housing authority, Ms. Dozier, there will be a robust um eviction protection and, and rent stay, and, and help for current renters in the package that we're gonna collectively bring forward together.
And Mayor, including in that conversation, will there be a, a outline of the early wins? The money that we allocated early on that we thought we could get out for computers and training? Did we actually win or is that process still ongoing?
Well, we, it's a little bit of both, there's a lot of money that's out and there's money that's in process, Howard?
Thank you Mayor, so we did send out a memo to Mayor and Council with the status update of some of the early wins and some of the CRF funding that's gone out, uh we can certainly provide an update to that memo to include some of the things that have occurred over the last couple of weeks and we'll, we'll try and get something out later this week just so we can have it in advance of next week's meeting.
Thanks Howard.
Yep. Okay, let us move on then to the final item of the day, a very important item, and this is the uh approval of the Home Key Program application.
All right, we have Susan DC who's gonna be presenting.
Good afternoon Mayor and members of the city council. As you're well aware, uh, the county's point in time homeless count conducted in twenty nineteen revealed an estimated five thousand five hundred and seventy individuals experiencing homelessness, the highest number ever reported in our county. As you're also aware, people experiencing homelessness are particularly vulnerable to succ- to succumbing to the coronavirus, given they lack living quarters in which to shelter and access to regular hygiene. For that reason, the state has allocated five hundred and fifty million dollars in COVID-19 related funding to convert motels and other non-residential structures to house homeless people and to, and to help reduce the spread of disease in these populations while also providing a long-term solution to their housing needs. The federal coronavirus relief funding must be expended, as we know, by December thirtieth of this year, which is an incredibly short timeframe for acquisition and repurposing a structure into multifamily housing. The urgency of the pandemic and the urgency presented by the expenditure deadline have led to an incredibly tight application period with applications being funded on a first-come, first-served basis. There are regional allocations of funding up until August thirteenth with twenty-five million dollars being available for capital costs in the six-county Secog region plus Amador. After August thirteenth, the state will review the remaining funds and those will go into a statewide pool. The funding opportunity was announced less than a month ago, only on July sixteenth. At SHRA, we felt it was imperative to identify a motel in each the city and the county to take advantage of this unique funding opportunity. To that, to that end, SHRA worked with a broker who researched sixty-eight motels in the city. Fortunately, one of our development partners, Jamboree Housing, was already working on a motel conversion in the city and was able to secure a letter of intent to purchase the Hawthorne Motel on Burkitt near Richards Boulevard. Today, we are seeking approval of a resolution which is a required component of the Home Key Program application. For your awareness, state staff encouraged us to submit the application prior to date, to today's vote, given the extremely tight application and expenditure deadlines. Therefore, the application was submitted last Friday afternoon. With us today is Jere Glasser, Vice President of Jamboree's Northern California Operations, who will chime in and provide some details about the project.
I know Jere that you're on the line.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, my video is muted, but I'm, but I'm happy just to speak, um, so, hold on. There we go. Thank you Susan for that introduction, I'm so excited to be here with you all today and share some more details about the proposed development located in the River District. Jamboree has numerous years of experience being with SHRA and we look forward to this endeavor in partnership with both SHRA and the River District. Three twenty-one Burkitt Drive is loc- located on the northeast, northeast of the intersection of Richards Boulevard and Burkitt Drive. Currently, the site is a two hundred and seventy-two units and stay hotel located on two parcels. The two parcel site, which is proposed to be acquired on or before December two thousand twenty by Jamboree Housing Corporation, will be transformed into a workforce housing development project that will include two phases. The first phase will include a hundred and two units of interim housing that will be converted to permanent supportive housing. And the second is will include approximately a hundred and seventy, a hundred and thirty to a hundred and seventy workforce housing units. Burkitt Village, the name given to the project associated with the Home Key application, will be the first of the two-phase development located on the northern parcel of the property and is property that is subject to the Home Key application. Burkitt, the Burkitt Village units are currently housed in two buildings that include ninety-six studio units and six bedroom units and are accompanied by space for community activities and support services. It's anticipated the project will house a hundred and six individuals who have been homeless or at risk of homelessness and also impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Immediately upon acquisition, the two buildings located on the northern parcel of the campus that comprise Burkitt Village will receive health and um safety repairs and necessary replacement and repairs of furnishings and systems so that it can be rapidly rehoused and operated as interim housing. Burkitt Village is planned to be operated as interim housing for up to three years. Jamboree, Jamboree is working closely with the housing authority to provide the capital and operating resources to augment the request for Home Key resources and to support the project's eventually conversion to supportive housing. In preparation for the conversion of Burkitt Village, Jamboree plans to entitle the site, the entire site, as permanent multifamily housing in the spring of two thousand twenty-one. This will facilitate the development of the second parcel or the second phase of the project located in the southern parcel of the campus. Jamboree and the housing authority are working collaboratively on a financing execution for the second phase of the campus that will include approximately- for the second phase of the campus that will include approximately 130 to 170 units of workforce housing. The goals of this effort are to create a redevelopment strategy that will complement the adjacent use, consolidate operations, increase the supply of workforce housing, given the project's proximity to downtown and spur future redevelopment within the River District. The acquisition and redevelopment of thirty, of 321 Burkett, including Burkett Village, is the pathway to immediately address the housing needs pro- and proactively support the revitalization in the River District. Upon completion, a model community will exist demonstrating what can be possible when the private sector and public sectors collaborate to address the city's significant housing shortage. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeri. SHRA greatly appreciates the feat at which Jamboree was able to prepare the rather complex application to the state and their continued contribution to providing affordable housing in our community. If the application is successful, we will return to the council with further details and further requests for approvals. If there are sufficient statewide resources after the regional allocations are distributed, SHRA is open to considering round two applications in the city. Three in SHRA staff are available to address any questions you may have.
Okay, um, I know that there is a lot of discussion on this. Uh, why don't we begin with the, uh, public testimony? How many callers do we have, Madam Clerk?
I have seven callers on this item.
Okay, let's begin.
First caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Mike Jaskey, representing Sacramento area congregations together known as ACT-AC. I'm a city resident and council member, Gera's District Six. SAC-AC submitted a letter to you yesterday supporting this proposal, which I'll summarize and add to based on the presentation today. SAC-AC supports the proposal to submit the application in an amount of two and a half million for the purposes of acquiring, rehabbing and operating a motel as permanent supportive housing for homeless people and for affordable housing for, uh, service workers. We hope that there will be a success in the application. Motel conversion has long been an option for developing permanent supportive housing. Obviously, permanent supportive housing is in short supply in our community and its lack means some homeless people are stuck in shelters and thousands are unsheltered on the streets. You've invested heavily in triage shelter development. The premise of these shelters is to move homeless people off the streets, understand their needs and move them into housing appropriate to those needs. If you don't add to permanent supportive housing, there's no ability to flow these people through these shelters into housing. So on behalf of homeless people, we urge you to take this important step. Don't repeat the folly of the County Board of Supervisors who earlier today rejected a comparable SRH proposal for a motel purchase near McCollum Business Park. Take advantage of the state's Home Key Program funding and approve this proposal. Finally, there's a large number of form letter oppositions to this project that misstate the nature of the project as described by SRHRA and Jamboree. Pay attention to what is actually proposed versus what these opposition letters claim is proposed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Fred Flyness. My family is the property owner at 900 Richards Boulevard. We are right in the middle of the River District. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and our tenant, Yellow Cab of Sacramento. The ownership of Yellow Cab was unable to address the council today due to a medical procedure. The River District has been the focus of solving the homeless problem for decades. The River District is home to multiple service agencies, private and public shelters, permanent supportive housing, soup kitchens and campers. We are the homeless district. The fence around Yellow Cab has been cut through at least 10 times. Cab windows of no less than 10 cabs have been shattered so that electronic equipment could be stolen. Damages have exceeded $18,000 for our tenant, Yellow Cab. The homeless have been caught bathing in our wash rack, naked men have been caught in our restrooms, homeless sleep in our dumpster. One person was caught trying to set our gas meter on fire. Fires and barbecues are set on the old spur track adjacent to our property. Trucks have been thrown at our buildings. The police show up, their hands are tied. Same people are seen the next day. Feels nobody is paying attention to us at City Hall. Many of the homeless are dangerous to, a danger to the employees, the yellow cab and the property. Please don't add this, pardon, additional burden to the residents and workers at the River District. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and esteemed council members. My name is Jenna Abbott and I'm seeking you today in my capacity as the Executive Director for the River District P-Bid and as a representative of the 183 property owners, 342 businesses and 5,847 jobs that currently make up the district. Last week, late in the week, we became aware that the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency was applying for funding to facilitate the purchase of the Hawthorne Inn. We understand and agree that housing the homeless is critical. We just simply cannot be the location choice for this project. We want to be clear that we are not crying NIMBY. As you all well know, the River District has long been home to multiple social service agencies, shelters both public and privately funded, permanent supportive housing, soup kitchens and a large population of homeless individuals. We have the largest concentration of social services providers, shelter beds and homeless individuals in the region. Despite having the lion's share of the shelter beds, social and other homeless services and because of that, our homeless population continues to grow. The homeless come because the services are here. The services want to locate here because the homeless population is here and this is a vicious cycle. We have reached the crisis stage. Adding another 272 bedrooms to a district that is already overburdened is shortsighted and will overburden the district even further. I fear that should you choose to proceed, the property and business owners in the district who are harboring a simmering resentment, that resentment will turn to a boil. We understand this need and I heard a caller earlier talk about how this process was collaborative. I can tell you that this process has felt anything but collaborative to the property and business owners in the River District. I would strongly suggest and make a plea to you that you-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, thank you. We would please ask you to choose a different location for this housing.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
My name is David Padgeam. My partners and I are the owners of, um, property located at 444 North Third Street in Sacramento. We are separated from the Hawthorne Suites, uh, which is to the left of us by a fence going across the back of both of our properties. The primary tenant we have in our building, which is an 80,000 square foot, five building complex, is the Center Health Pace Program, which is, um, a program which serves the needs of elderly throughout our community, involves bringing the elderly to the property in the morning via vans and various vehicles. They stay for the day, they're provided medical treatment, uh, meals, um, and a variety of other services. I've not talked to Center Health on this, but I am quite confident that they would not have entered into a 15-year lease and spent the money they did on the program, having known that this type of facility would be put in next door to them. Um, I would also disagree with, um, the earlier statement in the presentation that this was, that this would be something that would assist in the revitalization of the River District. I think that all my fellow board members on the River District Board and the other business people I know in the community would vigorously dispute that fact. So, um, I hope some consideration is given into, into this as far as pace is concerned. I think that if, if the council members aren't familiar with the Pace Program, I would be delighted to meet with them and show them the facility and give them a better understanding why we think this is so problematic and to do this in this location. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. This is Carla Collins with United Engineering Resources, parent company to Matrioscope Engineering Labs, calling in. Uh, 10 years ago during the previous economic crisis, our family-owned business selected the River District as the new company headquarters at 601 Burkett and District Three. It's been years since I spoke out at a city council meeting with things big in support of a new entertainment and sports complex to be built in downtown Sacramento. Um, I moved to the East Bay during the groundbreaking of that project, but I still call Sacramento my home. My family and friends are there, business and community colleagues like you, Angelica and Howard, and our primary office of which I still work out of weekly. As many of you know, I was very involved in Urban Land Institute and sat on the Advisory Board of ULI Sacramento from 2009 to 2014. In ULI, there is an urban plan program in which we work with students to walk through a faux development project and revitalize a neighborhood. And this includes an issue just like this, housing a homeless shelter of which I didn't think I'd have to speak on in real life. I'm calling in to oppose the Home Key SHRA proposal to reuse Hawthorne Suites in the River District. You should have received a letter in opposition from my father, Robert Padlock, the CEO and president of our family businesses, emailed to you all today. I'm gonna read just a few sentences of his two pages. While expanding into the Hawthorne Suites location may seem convenient to our public officials, we as property owners have experienced firsthand devastating consequences that come along with attracting more and more homeless by disproportionately solidating services into a single region, as has been expected of the River District over the years. In recent years, we've experienced a major increase in assaults, including the shooting death of a homeless individual who was attacking private security in the district across the street from our property, assault committed on our employees on numerous occasions, threatening them with physical violence while brandishing weapons, regular vandalism to our property building and vehicles, feces smeared on windows, drugs, syringes, trespassing on our roof to vandalize rooftop equipment, um, theft and the regular use of the property for drug dealing and other uses after normal business hours, resulting in additional damage and ongoing repairs and cleanup. And while we agree that housing of the-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. While we agree that the housing homeless, um, issue is critical, the area around our business simply cannot build a location for this project. And I wish it was under circumstances I was calling in, but I cannot support this.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Bernice Krieger. I am a resident of Woodlake in District Two and I want to thank Councilmember Warren for his efforts on, uh, the emergency bridge housing. I think that as the presenters showed, this is a program that has really worked out. Unfortunately, that has not been the case for the current Surestate Hotel in the Woodlake neighborhood. Um, and I want to urge Mayor Steinberg and Councilmember, um, all the council members to follow the recommendations of Supervisor Serna and the Director Edwards, to not consider this location for permanent supportive housing. Personally, I, I'm supportive of the current location that's being discussed. I understand that there have been a lot of callers that are, uh, property owners, um, such as the Yellow Cab, which I have worked personally with, great businesses. However, unlike Woodlake, these are not residential property owners. These are primarily, uh, businesses. And as we have communicated myself and my neighbors in the past, personal, uh, violation of property and person that have occurred because of the residence of the current Surestate, including the anecdote of the lady that was unfortunately under the influence of meth, which as you recall, Dr. Freeze in the previous, uh, previously said that if you are gonna be homeless, you're gonna do drugs and unfortunately you're gonna do meth and meth is horrific. And this person didn't break into a business, broke into somebody's personal residence. So again, as we're considering locations, I want to urge, uh, Councilmember Harris to be supportive of this location since it is something that is a good area. And I want to urge Councilmember Warren to fight for District Two to be sure that Surestate is not, uh, a permanent location and that you guys are all supportive of closing it by September 30th. But please, 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 let's be sure that we are not opening something that has not failed, that the own supervisors have said has not failed and the own director of-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I just urge you to follow recommendations to not consider the Surestate and Woodlake as a project Home Key.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good afternoon, council. My name is Scarlett Bustos. I hope you're all doing well. I'm not gonna keep you very long. I just wanted to say that I wholeheartedly support item 11, uh, the proposal for H, uh, SHRA to submit an application to the State of California Home Key Program for the amount of up to 12 million to build housing for the unhoused community. It's very exciting, um, to be considered a major win for the unhoused community. So please support our unhoused community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, Mayor Steinberg, I have no more callers.
Okay, let's turn it over to the council members. I think appropriate maybe to ask Mr. Harris, uh, Councilmember Harris, Vice Mayor, to, go first. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I wear two hats in this, in this item, both as a representative of the city but also of District Three and specifically the River District, and that puts me in a difficult position. What I'm gonna do here is argue both sides of this argument and then I'm gonna tell you where I land. It might surprise you a little bit, but look, since I got elected, I realized that homelessness was the biggest problem facing the city. In fact, I campaigned on it and have tried very hard to make a positive effect on the homeless population to provide opportunities for housing or services, even as something as basic as the pit stop program to give them a place to relieve themselves with some dignity. I've been fairly effective, but the fact of the matter is, the River District is homeless central for the, for the five-county region. Fully half of the homeless in our region live in District Three, specifically the River District on any given night. As a result of that, the impacts of homelessness are felt by the people in District Three, to use a word that's used a lot these days, disproportionately. There aren't a lot of residents in District, in, in the River District, but there are two streets of residential, uh, people who live on Basler and Greer. And they have felt the impacts of homelessness 25 times more than any other resident in this city. On a daily basis, their homes are violated, they are violated, they live with filth and trash that is just absolutely unbearable. If I lived on Basler and Greer and if this was a city council meeting, I would be at the podium raising cane. So look, I, first I'd like to thank SHRA. They have done a tremendous job with this project and I think it's a great project. Being an advocate for housing and being an advocate for housing the homeless, I think that this project is a win. Frankly, Jamboree is a great developer and TLCS or Hope Cooperative is a great provider. Using recently available state money, uh, through the Home Key Project is a windfall. It's an opportunity, but there are problems as well. Uh, you know, there's, there's another circumstance here which is very rare, which is that there's a willing seller of this property. I tried to create the same scenario at Motel Six on Alhambra. That didn't work because of a complicated lease situation. But then I tried across the street at the Roy Inn and Suites, same problem, a, a, a lease situation that was very hard to work through. Finding opportunities like this are rare. To have funding and opportunity come together at the same moment is kind of extraordinary. And 272 units? That's amazing. So it's important to understand that only about 103 units of this would be transitional housing moving into permanent supportive housing, but another 170 would become lower-income workforce housing. All of these things are desperately needed in the city. So as a city trustee, I think this is a great project. But I represent the River District and I can tell you that if you don't think the impacts of homelessness are devastating, I want to walk you by Blue Diamond one evening. You know, I, I've long beat, beat the podium or, or the dius and said, we have to deal with the methamphetamine problem. And thankfully, with the help of Mayor Steinberg, we're moving in that direction and we'll be opening a meth sobering center. That's a small first step. You have to understand- You have to understand that meth use is the lion's share of homelessness right now. It affects so many people on the street. And so the result of that is that a lot of really bad activity happens. You know, I have walked in the River District in the evening, and I don't suggest that any of you do it unless you have a police officer with you because it's dangerous. I've had my life threatened twice by people hyped up on meth. One guy came with a big stick and started chasing me with it. You know, there are many stories about the impacts of homelessness. There are some homeless people who are down on their luck and very benign, but frankly, once they've been on the streets for a while and they get into meth use, everything changes. The River District Board, I have worked with them for the last five and a half years. And every time I have introduced a program that I thought would be helpful, starting with Mo Mo Hannah's Building, trying to do triage there, moving into railroad. And even though it wasn't in the River District, they were still really reticent to get involved with that project. Then, and Pit Stop. When I introduced Pit Stop, it was a boon to the River District. It cleaned up Ahorn Street like it has never been before, and still they opposed. You know, I have talked to the business owners in the River District for many years. In fact, I was one. My construction business was based in the River District for two years. I rented from Greta and Kemp LeChin on Dreher Street, and I got an eyeful. Keeping security in a business in that area is extremely difficult. Every single day, a business owner from the River District assails me with comments like, "The police don't help." "The trash is still there." There, I mean, oh my gosh. People send me pictures of feces constantly in their businesses. We've tried to mitigate these issues. We created the Hot Shot Program and allocated 50 grand to the River District P bid so that we could deal with some human waste. Again, Pit Stop. Downtown Streets Team made a tiny, tiny dent in the amount of trash in the River District. This is a real big problem for me. When you present to an area an idea of doing homeless housing in that area, of course, everybody immediately defaults to, can you guarantee me that you will offer this housing to people who are currently in the area? Well, because it's public money, you can't play favorites. You cannot guarantee that the people who move into Hawthorne Suites would be people who are currently impacting the River District. I get that, so that's out the window. You can say you have a preference, but it doesn't work that way. I was a proponent of Capital Park. I think it went very well. I think VOA did a great job. I think SHRA overwhelmingly managed that project very well. There are still naysayers in District 4 about that project. Here's my problem. Since I got elected, I have been fighting for economic revitalization of the River District and made progress. Mayor Steinberg helped me right in the beginning, when he got elected, to allocate some money to do a report, a vision statement of what could happen in the River District with the proper investment. Then I went out and tried to find an investor, and with the help of Ken Turton, we found a powerful group who had a vision for the River District that was nothing short of the Pearl District in Portland. And we were so close. They were about to close on much of the property on North 16th Street when COVID hit, and they withdrew from all the deals. And it all went poof. You know, when I look at the impacts in the River District, and it has never, ever been worse. I mean, it hasn't even approached the level of filth and just degradation that I see today. Hundreds and hundreds of tents. The amount of trash is just legion. And I have to say to myself that we, as a city, have not been able to functionally address these issues. The police cannot manage the drug sales. Our solid waste department cannot manage the trash. And then you add extraneous circumstances because of COVID. So the county, okay, the county health order. They start letting everybody out of the county jail. Where did they go? The River District. You know, the impacts in crime have increased dramatically. You only have to place a call to Captain Wendy Brown to find out what's going on here. The River District is very much disproportionately affected by the problems related to homelessness. It's horrible. Try to run a business in the River District, and you will be despondent in no time. And I can tell you that a lot of longstanding businesses are looking to leave the River District because they just have had it. They tell me every day, you know, I know your heart's in the right place, but you can't get anything done for me. I'm sorry, Councilmember, but you know, you and your colleagues haven't got it right. Now, we know that a lot of this problem is because of Martin V. Boise and specifically because of the county health order and the problems created by COVID-19. That's the reality on the ground. So then you get to the timing piece. Is this the right time to put more beds in the River District? Understand that there are already 500 shelter beds in the River District, far, far more than any other council district. Nothing comes close. And you know, it does help homeless people. There's no doubt. Those who are in a condition that they could be successful in housing, that they're at that point where they're willing to tackle all the obstacles in their lives and improve, there is good that happens in these shelter beds in the River District. But then, on the flip side, you know, I look at a big swath of my district failing, going downhill. Great people who've run businesses for 25 years, who are just absolutely at their wit's end. I'm at my wit's end. On Basler and Dreher, I have tried for three straight years to get relief for those two streets and those residents. And it just is not forthcoming. I've worked with everybody. I've talked to city manager and to the police, starting with Kathy Lester and moving through several captains. It hasn't improved. It's degraded very substantially. So here we are with a balance. You know, if I were in my colleagues' positions, I would see this as an extremely viable project that will create workforce housing and some temporary respite for a few people in the River District. Also to note is that currently at the Hawthorne Inn and Suites, there are numerous calls for service from the police because of homeless break-ins. So we've got homeless people actually squatting in a number of the units there currently. You can argue that isn't it better to house the homeless than to leave them out in the wild, and then you have all of these impacts that you get from the homeless population? I actually agree with that argument. And to my good friends on the River District Board, I say to you, I think that this project is a good project and will do not substantial harm to the River District, but I don't believe it will help the River District at all. So when somebody calls from Woodlake and says, you can't do SureStay, I understand where they're coming from, but spend a day in the River District and see if you really have a case to be argued. It's nowhere near what people in the River District put up with on a day-to-day basis. You know, I'm very conflicted, obviously, because I see both sides of this issue. The fact that my grand plan for economic revitalization of the River District, that it just failed because of COVID, is extremely discouraging to me. Again, on the plus side, SHRA is doing a tremendous job with Mirasol, Mirasol Village. You know, they are bringing a project there that will improve the River District very substantially. It will be great. But you know what? That's a multi-year project, and it's going to take a while till it gets to fruition. Right now, we're in a pandemic. And right now, I just really couldn't go into the River District Board and face my friends there and say, I had to vote for this because we need housing in the city. You know, this is a tough one for me, and I can understand completely if my colleagues vote differently than I will on this one. This is not a NIMBY concern. This is like worrying for the safety and the well-being and the economic security of a large piece of my district. I took a vote against Larry Carr for the shelter there. Many of the arguments that he presented, I suppose I'm presenting here now, but I can tell you in real time, every day in the River District, it is unsafe, it's unsanitary, it's almost untenable to perform business there, and it's devastating two streets for my constituents. So very unfortunately, I have to say that in this situation, although I want to be a trustee for the city, I have to be an advocate for my district, and I can't support this one at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Jeff, Vice Mayor. So I know I've got a number of follow-up questions and want to get into this, but I want to hear from my colleagues first. I think we have Councilmember Gedda. After that, Mayor Tom Ashby, and then who?
Hey.
Councilmember-
Yeah, I think Mr. Hanson. Councilmember Hanson.
Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank, you know, our Vice Mayor Jeff Harris here. And he took me on a walk at night during the point-in-time count of that area. We stopped and we parked at the McDonald's, grouped everybody together, and started our walk across Richards Boulevard and through that entire area there and a number of vacant lots where you could tell that there had been a very large camp beforehand. We talked to some people who were parked right across the street from that motel and asked them questions about their situation and how they came to be. And as we turned the corner, we ran into a gentleman who was, you know, just sitting on the sidewalk. He'd been there all day and talked about how he grew up in Oak Park and, you know, the challenges that he had. And obviously, he had some drug dependency issues and what were the things affecting him? He had lost, you know, the majority of his fingers in his right hand, and he's right-handed. And so for him, the ability to work was a challenge. And, you know, through that whole experience, we went around to the church once we crossed around that loop area and saw the experience of multiple people there of facing homelessness at the time. The Hawthorne Suites there also, I think, as, you know, my colleague has said, has seen better days. And I think the challenges that they're facing are no different than many of the motels that we see throughout the city. In fact, you know, there are many on Stockton Boulevard in my area or other motels throughout the district that I would like to see have better days. We've had a very successful project, the boulevards by Mercy Housing off of Stockton and Fruit Ridge, that also was a motel with calls for service, a lot of issues that were difficult, right next to, you know, a high school and an elementary school. And seeing the success that has happened with that permanent supportive housing, going from a motel to permanent supportive housing, not without its challenges, but definitely light years different than what it was. And next to a school, next to a neighborhood, you know, I think is a positive example of how we can use an existing asset that has had better days into something very productive to meet our current needs. I want to thank the SHRA staff for the work that they've done here and Jamboree for being so focused on this project. You know, I think, you know, the Vice Mayor nailed it right on the head. It's difficult to get to any of these projects. It's difficult to find a place, a property owner who wants to sell their property because, to some extent, you know, some of the, I'll call them what they are, and some of them, we have slum boards who can make a lot of money by doing very little with these properties. And to find a willing seller and a willing buyer to do this is very rare, so I think we have a rare opportunity. The other thing I'd like to point out is that the reason we're voting on this today is because there's a deadline on Thursday, two days from now. And then another one right up against it on Friday for $500 million that the state has put out for the entire state. Now, $500 million for the entire state is insignificant. You know, I mean, it really doesn't move the needle on what our real demand is. And in fact, I think the region itself is only eligible for $25 million out of that pot. Is that correct, Michelle? I can't remember.
That is correct.
So we're competing in a two-day period for a huge amount of money. And so the question is, should we leave money on the table when we have a need so great at the moment? The other thing that's come to mind, having, you know, also spoken to many of the providers in my district and throughout the city, particularly Weave, who has been a huge advocate for helping people, not just individuals, but families who've been facing a difficult time. And something that many people don't know is that they also have been working at Mayfair Fields and working in their program over there in a much larger capacity, helping families in need, not just those experiencing domestic violence in need. And also, I spoke with St. John's recently about their concept of being able to house families immediately. And both of these organizations and many others, I know my colleague, Councilmember Chenier, has also been working with other organizations where we have the opportunity of quickly procuring homes, manufactured homes, at the same time that are with bathrooms, multiple rooms, living and kitchen, and an ability to be able to house multiple people. So, you know, when I see this application here, I feel like, one, as a city, I think, and here I'm operating as a trustee and also as a district rep, you know, for a constituent in my district, and also as a trustee, saying that we can't leave money on the table because it's an opportunity we may never see again. Others will apply for it, and I think we need to go for it. It is a very thoughtful application. I see the challenges that are happening in the district. I saw them firsthand. I have trust in Jamboree. I have seen the success of a motel conversion. But I also feel that the application falls short. And so I think the application, because we have an opportunity to not have just SHRA, but the city also go and apply. We're operating today as a housing authority, but we also are, we can operate as the city to apply for more money. So I think we need to be applying for not only this project, but go after every pot of money we can right now. And so what I'd like to see is that we apply not only for this project, but also for the Weave project, the St. John's project, and any other project that our city staff can put together between now and the deadlines for Round 1 and Round 2, which are within dates. So the state gave us less than a month to basically find these opportunities and then get it out, and then expend the money before December 30. This is a very aggressive, difficult timeline. And I know this is very challenging for SHRA and our city staff to do, but I think we have to give them the full and maximum autonomy to apply for as many viable projects as we can because if the Hawthorne doesn't pan out, we should not let other projects fall through, particularly now that the county has rejected their proposal. That leaves a higher amount of capacity for other projects. If the Hawthorne was eligible and we were able to get the Weave project, which is up in the north in District 2, in the north in District Two, and the St. John's project, which is in the south in District Six, we've got good diversity throughout the city that I think would help us in achieving our goals. So with that, Mayor, that's a long way of saying that I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion here to not only, and I'm using the language here that was provided to us by our city staff, and make sure that we move, that we act not only as the housing authority, but also act as the city council to move and amend the current resolution, and have a joint resolution of the city and the housing authority, to be co-applicants, and giving the city manager or the designee of the city manager to submit additional applications, along with St. John's and Weave, to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for Project Home Key, and execute all the necessary agreements under that program. And if we're successful in receiving those funds, that we amend the city budget appropriately to address the success of those grants, and also that we, I would like the staff to have the ability to apply for any alternative project that is in any other district that is eligible for Project Home Key. And again, I wouldn't want to do this kind of broad motion, except for the fact that the deadline is this week, both deadlines are this week, for round one and round two. So, with that, I'll make that my motion, and I, one, I want to, again, I appreciate my colleague, Councilmember Harris, is consistent and thoughtful advocacy for his district, or steward for the city, and for walking me around and seeing a day in his district. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I know, I want to ask about the Hawthorne later, and I'm gonna wait for my colleagues, but I do want to take a moment now to pick up on your line of questioning, Councilmember Gedda, about the Thursday deadline, and engage Director Dozier, if I can, for a minute here. As I understand it, the statewide $550 million, I thought it was $600, $550 million, for any city or county that applies prior to Thursday, the region is guaranteed a formulaic amount, which is $25 million, right? Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And now, today, as Councilmember Gedda reported, this county board, by a three-to-two vote, voted no, as I understand it, to apply for Project Room Key, Project Home Key funding for any potential motel in the county. For this particular project, whatever we decide on Hawthorne, your ask is for $12.5 million, and the region is guaranteed $25 million, and if the county isn't applying, I don't know what competition we might have from El Dorado County or Placer County, but we represent, obviously, the majority here of the homeless problem, as the Vice Mayor Harris said, wouldn't it be wise for us to be aggressive in our application and try to get as much of that $25 million as we can for a variety of needs to add to this teaser spreadsheet that I talked about a couple of times, that we're gonna bring forward next week? If you'd respond to Councilmember Gedda's suggestion, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, in fact, we would be able to look at other particular projects, we would need to have this resolution approved as is, so that we could just get Hawthorne off and going, and then look at submitting applications, as Councilmember Guerra was talking about, for additional projects, or we haven't stopped looking at motels. So, if there is another one that pops up that meets this criteria, then I think, yes, we should aggressively go for that, and I am never a proponent of leaving any dollars on the table. You know, if there's $25 million, that's here for Sacramento, we want all 25, plus any additional money that comes up that some other jurisdiction can't use, which is a high probability that that could occur, which is why I think that we need to have this blanket authority that Councilmember Guerra is talking about, because we have to be very nimble, we have to move very, very fast to get these applications in and get top priority.
So, you're good with Councilmember Gedda's suggestion, then, that the application you file by Thursday be for as much of the $25 million as possible, and you would list the potential motel here that we're talking about, depending on the vote, but you would also list the other, the other possibilities, including manufactured housing?
What we would have to do is submit separate applications, we'd work with the city on that. They do require them to be separate applications, because it gives a lot of specific detail about the nature of the project that you're putting, so we can't just list them and put them together. But I mean, I think those are just kind of the administrative workings that we can work out, so, you know, we can take care of that part, separate them accordingly.
Okay, that's great. So, I take that as a positive answer to your, to your request, Councilmember Gedda. I certainly support your, your part of the motion here. But let's get now to the other members, Councilmember Hanson, then Mayor Protem Ashby, and then I'm going to dig in on the Hawthorne piece myself, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a very good conversation, but it, I just want to go back for a second and thank Councilmember Harris. I know that that was probably one of the hardest decisions, this is probably one of the hardest decisions he had to make in balancing his role as a trustee and a representative, and, you know, Jeff, if you don't mind me addressing you by first name, you have the heart of a lion when it comes to homelessness issues, and I know that this is an area in the River District that you care deeply about. I represent, and people sometimes forget, a slice of the River District that is about 500 feet, starts about 500 feet from the Hawthorne Suites. And I think that this conversation, in the concentration of homelessness services in the core, not just in the River District, although the River District tends to, as an association, have the most acute problem on the streets, but also tends to advocate very strongly against additional services. The core of Sacramento that I do represent has an amalgamation of services as well. And I want to draw a distinction right up front here between what is in our email inboxes from many of the business owners, and what this project is. And we heard very clearly from LaShelle and the project proponent, that this is a workforce housing project, as well as interim housing project, that will be converted essentially to permanent supportive housing. I live probably the closest of any council member to the River District, I see it on a daily basis, being here in Alkali Flat, and I also have experience with similar projects. This is a large project, so don't get me wrong, but the way it's broken up, I think, is very critical, but the Seventh and H project that Mercy Housing did, some of my neighbors said the very same things as we're hearing out of the River District business owners, this will be the end of us, it will be a calamity, we don't deserve it, we have too much. After the project opened, a coffee shop came to the ground floor, a Japanese restaurant, community clinic, and the project has been nothing but a positive contribution to what was an otherwise empty and desolate part, corner of the neighborhood adjacent to the rail yards. We saw the Hotel Berry as well get converted into permanent supportive housing, and be a very significant contributor as well to that question of where do people go? And the Hotel Berry has not been a source of calls for service, just like Seventh and H hasn't. And, you know, we had a great debate at this council about Capital Park Hotel, which was a declining, dilapidated residential motel that needed intense repairs, and I think SHRA did an amazing job confronting what was essentially a money pit type problem, but housing almost 500 people over the course of that project, and that project, which is council-supported repeatedly, is a permanent supportive housing project. So, to an extent, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, but I also believe, the tragedy of, Mayor, I can hear you, sorry.
It's not me.
Someone was talking. Oh, I don't know who that was. The tragedy of the commons issue here that I think everyone laments, is that while the city continues to invest, we make very difficult decisions to do the right thing, it's what our values compel, it's what our residents implore us to do, to find housing, to provide services. We are, in effect, the six-county region's recipient for people experiencing homelessness, because we are one of the few jurisdictions that takes that responsibility, not only seriously, but tries to live up to the expectations of our oath of office. And so, I think this is very hard in some ways, but in other ways, it's very simple. These declining motels, and I have a bunch of them on my side by Jaboom, they are often the source of not only calls for service, we had to bust with PD and the district attorney, Motel Six, for sex trafficking operations happening out of their hotels, and there was a consent decree related to that. These declining properties in these very type of areas tend to be magnets for crime, whereas the opposite is true usually when you put housing in. And I think there's a great example of that with Township Nine. Township Nine's affordable housing has been a bright spot in an otherwise very difficult area. That project has brought residents who care about the community, who are willing to engage productively with the businesses, but also honestly with the homeless community, and we've heard from some of those very people who live at the Township Nine Affordable Housing project, that go clean up the river, they take responsibility for the community around them. And one of the greatest disappointments of the redevelopment era is that we didn't build enough housing. We built a lot of commercial, a lot of retail, because we were chasing, as a philosophy, sales tax dollars. Now, we have a chance here to rectify that through a unique source of funds that otherwise we wouldn't really have, to buy these properties, to rehabilitate them, and our agency and their partners have been exceptional at doing very similar projects. You can look at the SRO conversion of the Ridgeway, which Ali Youssef led, you can look at a variety of these, and they are remarkable in the transformation that they bring, not only for the residents who live in them, but for the communities that they're in. I want to share my screen for a second, Madam Clerk, because I want to talk about what the city has done. And so, here, you see a map of the River District, and hopefully you can see my cursor as well. On the right side of the map, 16th Street, we are working with SHRA and RT to build a new light rail stop to serve the Marisol Village project, which is very much underway, and got a very significant award of funding just last Friday from the state. That project will come to fruition. We've got a Twin Rivers School here, a STEAM Academy, we have the projects in the rail yards here in the bottom part, where a new Kaiser Hospital will rise, where a new MLS stadium will rise. Just to the west of that, we have the new Powerhouse Science Center, which everybody knows that I was a huge proponent of, a champion of, and I'm very excited to see that come to fruition. Above that, at Seventh and Richards, the state is building a new campus for 5,000 employees. Above that, Township Nine finally has new ownership and will hopefully come out of the ground. We have a tremendous amount of activity, and I would layer onto that the idea that we are not far off from extending light rail over the river into the airport. Yes, this is a long-running project, but if that Sequoia Pacific stop is put in, it'll be less than 1,500 feet, as the crow flies, from this particular project, from the Township Nine housing, and hopefully a lot of these other infill sites that surround it. The warehouses, the industrial nature of the River District, I think, can live in a complimentary way to these housing projects, but there's no doubt that this area will be transformed, much like the Pearl District in Portland, and to ensure that it's not just gentrified away, we do need to ensure that these type of housing projects are here, and this is a great opportunity to help trigger, hopefully, federal support for an extension of the Green Line over the river, to get this station built, because there's enough residential density, and to further our goals around transit-oriented development, infill, our climate goals, everything else, and it pains me very much, but I will second the motion from Councilmember Guerra. I don't like disagreeing with my colleague Jeff, just like I didn't like disagreeing with Councilmember Carr, or for that matter, Councilmember Cohn, when we voted to approve the McKinley Village project. But in the end, I believe this is in the best interest of the public, I believe it's in the best interest of serving our most vulnerable, and I think we have an imperative to do this, and to try to capture the rest of the money that Councilmember Guerra and the mayor talked about. Thank you.
Okay, before I turn it over, I just want to clarify really, because I'm back and forth with our Assistant City Attorney here. We are sitting as the housing authority here, not the city council. It's concurrent, but formally as the housing authority, and so, Councilmember Gedda, I think if your motion, if you make the, if your motion is to have the housing authority take the lead in collaboration with the city, I think that would be consistent with the Brown Act, because I'm told that we cannot take an action as a city council here, but we can take an issue as the housing authority. So I think your motion is appropriate in germane, as long as it's the housing authority taking the lead, probably, by the way, your motion should be a separate motion from the motion that is contained within the staff report about the specific motel project in question.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be glad to take the direction of whatever our both councils recommends on how to move this forward. I'm indifferent either way, it was just the language that I was provided to by our city attorney.
Okay, so, just to make sure if I'm getting any other advice here on my phone.
Mayor, just one clarification, and maybe Mr. Ruyak or the staff attorney for SHRA, but I believe we can, through this action, just delegate authority and provide direction to SHRA to submit additional applications. It sounded like LaShelle needed a resolution, but if we can add a section to the resolution that just says that we authorize the staff to apply for additional projects, can we do that?
So, with this-
As directed?
With this particular resolution, it's a form resolution that the state requires, however, you then take the separate action and provide that level of direction, because we would have to come back with another resolution on that anyway, but that would give us the opportunity to get started and do the work.
Yeah, it's a separate, it's a separate resolution.
That makes sense.
Councilmember Gedda's motion, without his objection, will be amended to make it the housing authority in collaboration with the city team that's going to take the lead on maximizing our options in terms of Project Home Key resources, including manufactured housing and anything else that is eligible that will help get people off the streets. I know I paraphrased Councilmember Gedda, but-
I concur.
And I will second both of those, for the sake of the-
Okay, very, very, very good. Okay, so that's the procedural stuff, let's get back to, let's get back to the debate here. On either Councilmember Gedda's motion, and let's not forget, the main motion about the specific project in question, who is next, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protem Ashby's next, and Councilmember Shanier.
Very good, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and just on the technical details there, I think it's good to have it separated into two, because that gives Vice Mayor Harris an opportunity to participate in the larger citywide vote, even though he doesn't feel comfortable with the current one, so.
That's right.
I think that's wise, and also helps Ms. Dozier with her specific details for this one, so that's a good call. Thank Councilmember Guerra and Hanson and Mayor.
I think we got it straight. Go ahead, Councilmember Ashby.
So first, I, you know, I know a couple other folks said this, but I feel like I really want to say it too. Vice Mayor Harris has been a dogged champion of addressing homelessness. He's the only one of us to put on a tool belt and actually go build a shelter, and what some of you may not even know is, I have watched him in Natomas fight too, for locations for all different kinds of populations, I've watched him fight in East SAC for all kinds of different locations, and this one just happens to fall in the River District. Like Councilmember Hanson, I too have represented the River District at one point in my life, and I'm very familiar with how they feel and the reality of what's happening down there. I drive through the community all the time, obviously, Natomas is north of the River District, and so when we're normally meeting in the chamber there where the mayor is, I drive through that community every day to and from work, and it is incredibly impacted. And the problems that have arisen there, City Manager Chan and I both have taken our kids many times to Pipe Works, and sometimes it's hard to even get there, because roads can be completely shut down by tents and folks that have just taken over a whole street or a whole area. Wasn't too long ago that we had a rat infestation in the River District, because some homeless folks were actually feeding them raw chicken intentionally as pets. So, I just want to give voice to the fact that that is real, and we all have homelessness in our districts, obviously, some are much more impacted than others. Council District Two is also just inundated, Council Districts Four and Five, parts of Six inundated, and Eight, you know, Morrison Creek, and Steelhead Creek, and downtown, and we're all trying to deal with it, and we brought forward a five-point plan that this council agreed on. This is in that five-point plan of hotel conversion, and I think if we had more time to- And I think if we had more time to discuss it and really go into it, you, we would all agree that hotel conversion is one of the best ways to go to address this population. And part of that is because you can see successes in other projects. Councilmember Hanson has described some in detail. I got to be the councilmember downtown when we opened, when we broke ground on Hotel Berry and when we opened at 7th and H at Mercy Housing. Most people don't even know that there are homeless people being served in those buildings. It's not a hangout out front. You don't get checked in through the front. It's not a system where you walk up to the front door, just like Capital Park Hotel, which Councilmember Harris and Hanson champion. You guys did an amazing job. People are very proud of that project, and we're helping lots of people. The problem is that most of the providers in the River District are not the city, and they're not SHRA. They are nonprofits doing the very best that they can. But with those programs, people walk up, and so they're sleeping outside hoping to get a spot, or they're sleeping nearby because they might get food at a certain point. The programs are not run the same way that SHRA runs programs. And the way that SHRA runs hotel programs and hotel conversion programs and Mercy Housing and Hotel Berry and all the other projects that I've seen them take over, it will not look the way that the rest of the River District looks. And in fact, I know that one of you started the conversation saying that they can't focus on the population in that area, but I know that LaShelle will try, and I know that she'll work with the service providers to do her best to help the people in the River District move folks from the River District into that hotel. I know that she will do that. I have seen her do that in the past. I drove down to the Hawthorne Suites. That hotel is partially boarded up right now, and there are homeless people that have broken in and are living inside. We're talking about taking it over and making it better, not worse. We're not going to create a magnet. We're going to create a part of a solution, a part of a larger solution. A lot of my friends called in on those calls today, too. It's Collins, Jana. Those are my friends also in the River District and supporters and people that I have long friendships with, decades long. And I want to say this to them. I trust SHRA and LaShelle to put together a project in your district that will not make your district worse, but will make your district better. And I'm going to support her in that effort, and I'm really sad that the county didn't do the same. She had a wonderful project set to serve veterans, to go on a former Air Force site that would have been absolutely perfect, and I am so disappointed that the county didn't put their trust in SHRA and allow us to move forward. So I am going to support the proposal moving forward today. And to my friends in the River District, you have at least my promise to help Councilmember Harris make sure that it's as good as it can be to hold LaShelle and all of the service providers accountable. I will be there. I will do that. But we have to give her this chance and this shot. We must. I will also support Councilmember Garrett's second motion today, but I would like to know more about it before we enter into an agreement, because my preference would be for SHRA to identify another hotel somewhere for us, because I just think that this amount of funding doesn't come forward all the time. Had Councilmember Harris had access to this funding seven months ago, he had a hotel in pocket that he could have moved forward. He has found a few of them, and I think we can all work to try to help do that, too. So I'm going to support both motions today and lay down my promise to be a supporter to Vice Mayor Harris to make sure that this project is a net win for the River District.
Okay, who is next?
I think that's me.
Councilwoman Scheneer.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. So I'm also going to support, I guess if there are two motions here, both motions. This is a really difficult thing, and I want to, I actually want to thank Councilmember Harris for all the work that he's done on this. This is not an easy thing. I've been through a couple of shelter fights in my district, and I know that it's very conflicting. It would be easy to say, I'm just not going to do this here and put it somewhere else. Mr. Harris has never done that. He has always stood up and been accountable for who he represents and what we need as a city, and no one has worked harder on the homeless issue. You know, we are at a point where I think we struggled for years because we didn't have the resources. We had ideas about what to do, and we tried. We tried working with the county. We tried things on our own, but we never had the resources that are appearing before us these days. And, Mr. Mayor, I look forward to next week and seeing kind of the spreadsheet on all of that. But the problem has just gotten worse, and anyone can drive around the city. I'm sure everyone here is the same in the number of complaints you get. It's a daily occurrence for us in our office between Stockton Boulevard, 24th Street, and other areas. I don't think that we can turn our back on any possibilities, on any resources that appear before us. And it's not a good thing that we are over-concentrated in some areas, but my hope is that we can continue to build our way out of that over-concentration and continue to expand. I think that was part of the point of the five-point plan. I'd like to see an update on that, on the scattered housing and some other pieces of that puzzle that we put together. But there's just, we can't ignore this at all. I don't think we are, but if there are resources on the table, again, I think we need to go after that. I think we need to just work harder in those areas to bring additional resources to surround the projects that we have to create an oasis. I've been watching very closely two projects, certainly Boulevard Motel on Stockton Boulevard that Mercy runs, which has been great. I have not got a single complaint. I don't think Mr. Garrett has either, that it is just an incredibly well-run project. I also, my workplace, as I've said before, was next door to Capital Park. I talk to our building managers all the time. They really had no complaints, a little trash here and there, but nothing more than what's usual, and that has worked. And I think SHRA did a great job on that one as a precursor to what we're talking about now. So my feeling is, we just got to go forward. We got to look for more resources. We have to look for additional sites that we can use. I like the manufactured housing piece. You know, if we can look for areas of where to put that, I think that is a next big step. But again, I think if there's $25 million for the region and the county is not interested, I think that it's, it'll be interesting to see what surrounding counties do in the region, but I think that we have a really good opportunity here, particularly since we have the bulk of the, of the challenge. So I'm very much in favor of moving forward on this, with a nod to the work that Mr. Harris has done, and my sympathies, because it is, it's really hard. Again, I, you know, the fight we went through on Florin to build a shelter and what we've gone through on Broadway to get there, which we will finish and get there, is just really hard, because there are people who say, why me? Why my neighborhood? But I think it's got to be all of us and all of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you. All right, I've got a couple of questions and comments here before we vote. First of all, Jeff, Harris, in my opinion, you have nothing to apologize for, for all the reasons that have been stated here. You represent the city, and you represent your district, and you are doing the very best you can and doing a very good job. What I'm about to say might surprise you a little bit, because I know I'm the one that has pushed the hardest on making sure that we create as many opportunities as possible. And I think it's fair to say I recoil at, at the idea of NIMBYism, because I think it is the epitome of some people, you know, wanting it both ways, which is, solve the problem, just don't do it, you know, around me. When I hear Jenna Abbott and I hear her plea, I just want to say that it is not NIMBYism for a neighborhood that is doing way more than its fair share to say, hold on, wait a minute here. So this is not NIMBYism. It isn't. I take your concerns to heart here. And even with my feeling about what it takes and what we need to do, I'm a little bit torn here myself for the reasons that you described. But Vice Mayor Harris, you made one assertion that I want to challenge here on your behalf, actually, and your district's behalf, and I'd like to get into this a little bit, either with the lawyers or with Ms. Dozier, and that is, I think you said that, I'll paraphrase, that it is not possible to guarantee the neighborhood that the people who are going to be housed at the Hawthorne are going to be people that are currently unsheltered and homeless in the River District. That's essentially what you said. And I understand why you said it, because promises sometimes are made, and yet we have a citywide homeless problem, and so who knows how it ends up? But I want to ask this question again. Why isn't it possible that if we go forward with this Hawthorne project, that we do not in some way legally covenant that the people who will be living in that housing will be people who either are or were homeless at one time or another within a specific geographical area known as the River District? Why is that not possible? Or why is it not possible to say that 75%, I just throw that out there, have to be from the River District? Because the policy and intellectual conundrum for all of us here, and I think Jeff himself even acknowledged it, is that, you know, in part because of the coronavirus, and let's not underrate or underestimate the impact it has had on the ballooning homelessness throughout our entire city, that if we do not approve this project, how is it getting any better than in the River District? Until we actually build the sobering center around Meth, how is it getting any better in the River District? Until we complete the WX project and the other elements that we're going to hopefully be approving next week out of this additional funding that we have? How is the situation for the business owners going to get any better if we don't find a way to house people who are currently unsheltered and homeless in the River District? So I don't want to accept this idea that we cannot in some way legally guarantee the people, if we go ahead here, that we are going to get people off the streets in the River District in the revamped Hawthorne Suites. Can somebody from the staff side please talk about that for a moment, including maybe your, your legal counsel, around what it would take to actually do it in that way that might actually lead to a net improvement of homelessness in the River District?
I know I can, I can speak to a part of that. So essentially, what we could do is look to see, while it is interim housing, we have much more flexibility. So we could look to see what we could do to get to exactly what it is that you're referring to, Mayor, while it's operating as an interim shelter. Once it is converted over to permanent housing, then that's where fair housing laws are going to kick in, and we would not have that type of flexibility. But we would be able to, we would be able to look into that and get back to you. We have to bring this back to you in any event, if we are successful. And so if that is the direction of the board, then we would bring back and specifically outline, you know, what we could do to the maximum extent possible to get people from the River District. And I also have my attorney here as well, Brad, maybe if you could expand upon that.
Yeah. Just before you do that, though, Brad, I just want to differentiate something you said a moment ago. Just the timing of the project as it's envisioned between the interim housing and the permanent housing? What would be the time, how long would the housing be interim and allow us to get people off the streets in the River District?
And so I don't know, Jere, if you're still on the line or not, but we had envisioned that we would be looking at at least a two- to three-year timeframe as we arrange all of the permanent long-term financing to convert it into permanent supportive housing.
Correct. I am still on the line, and the conversion to permanent housing will require the installation of kitchens in each unit. Not all units currently have kitchens, and it will also require the identification of an ongoing operating source. And so we're working closely with SHRA to determine what that financing will look like, and it's likely that we would submit an application to the State Tax Credit Allocation Committee to secure the capital resources for the project, and do both those within three years.
Three years. So it's three years, it would be interim housing, and maybe now to Brad, if I might, the attorney, I'm sorry, last name?
Nocano.
Nice to see you. So let's just play this out for a moment. If it would be legal to bind, to bind ourselves, to say, I'm just throwing the number out, 75% of the, of the interim housing must be for people who were homeless in the River District, say, over the, over the previous six months. Once those people are then in the interim housing, wouldn't it then be legal for you to offer them the first opportunity three years from now to be able to, to be able to transition to the permanent housing phase of the project? How do we, how would we do this if this were our policy will?
Well, so we have to look into the specifics on how that could be accomplished. One of the things that we, I want to make clear is that under this NOFA, under this grant program, like many other programs, all sponsors are required to adopt a non-discrimination policy, and within that policy, one of the areas that's prohibited is arbitrary characteristics. So whether or not something that you're speaking about with regards to 75% of all persons' houses come from a specific area within the city, in this case, the River District, we would have to determine whether or not something like that would be deemed or could be deemed an arbitrary characteristic that would be or could be prohibited under the fair housing standards and any non-discrimination policy that we are required to abide by. So it's definitely something that we can look at and consider. At this moment, it's not something that, in this very moment, it's not something that we could obviously commit to, but we are more than happy to take a look at that. That is something that the rest of—
Well, I would want you to look at that when this comes back, but I want to challenge, you know, respectfully a little bit. There, under no circumstance that I can imagine, and I used to practice a little law myself, but even so, under no circumstance can I imagine it being discrimination or arbitrary to say that you are going to draw people who are unsheltered and homeless of all race, creeds, colors, genders, within the neighborhood that the, the housing exists. I just cannot imagine that that is arbitrary, that, I just, under no circumstance can I imagine it. It's not arbitrary, as long as you're not discriminating among who you choose from within the River District. But if, we're talking about how many units here? Overall?
102 for the shelter.
There's more than 102 homeless people in the River District. This should be our policy. I mean, we are, we are tripping over ourselves here by not creating that kind of certainty, that kind of legal certainty and that kind of policy certainty, because you're darn right that Jenna and the neighborhood rightfully says you're just going to bring in more people— you're just going to bring in more people from other areas. Why is that fair when they're already over-concentrated? Let's make it part of the resolution. So that at least we can say to them, we're going to try to house people who are currently unsheltered in your neighborhoods. I don't know. It's not arbitrary.
Mayor, sorry to interrupt. The way we handled this for Capital Park was we created a preference system in working through the intake. Not everybody on the streets is going to be appropriate for the housing. And that's one of the things we learned with Capital Park Hotel. So I think giving the preference allows us to draw in, and SHRA did a phenomenal job drawing from the downtown core to the extent they could. But we took in people from the River District. We took in people from very far away as well. Because if we had beds and people could be housed, we did that. So ultimately, I wanted a hard selection like you're suggesting. But that's not where we went, and it still worked out well. And so I would just suggest a preference.
No, I'm glad, I know that it worked out. But I think this beleaguered part of the city is asking for, well, they don't want it at all. But they are asking for something more. And if the numbers were, I mean, if you turn the numbers on its head, if the number, well, there are very few homeless people in the River District, and you want to put this here. So therefore, how are you going to not bring in people from other areas? That's not the case. You're right, not everybody is going to be appropriate for this kind of housing. But boy, there better be 102 people within the River District who are homeless now, who are appropriate for this kind of shelter and housing. I just think it's a confidence builder with the community here to try to alleviate the plight of the business community there. Because if we can't do that, then we're not creating confidence here of any kind as we look to other parts of the city as well that are experiencing, you know, serious homeless problems. So anyways...
Mr. Mayor, I would take that as a friendly amendment to the motion.
Okay. Well, I would appreciate that. And I know that the SHRA and the council need to come back and look at the legality of it. I'm just giving you my own opinion about the housing discrimination. I just can't, you're not violating the law by bringing people indoors who are homeless in the geographical area that you're building the housing. So let us, the one other thing then that I wanted to raise, because you also said, Director Dozier, that you're always in the ongoing process of looking at other possibilities in other motels. What happens if, let's say, we have enough money to do one or two motel conversions? And two months from now, you locate motels other than the Hawthorne that are, in your agency's judgment, better fits than the project we are talking about now? Is that, is it possible you could come back to us with a different recommendation? I know clarity is important here. But I just wanted to understand that part of the process, please.
So are you asking if in two months, let's say, something else came up where we would decide that that was a better opportunity than the Hawthorne? Is that your question?
Yes.
Well, in this particular situation, in two months, we will be well underway in terms of closing on this particular project because we have to move very fast to meet the requirements of the state. So it's not like a normal situation where, you know, it may take six to eight months to close. Remember, this has to be executed and closed before December. And then we have to start any type of rehab that's necessary so that within 90 days, people are in. So we don't envision that there would be a situation where we would change. And we've already made the application to the state. Once the state approves, they're approving us to move forward with this particular project.
Okay, I understand. That's fine. So I'm, again, I'm prepared to support both motions. But I would ask for that, as it's already been granted, that friendly amendment by Councilmember Geta, to try to tailor a policy here that is even stronger than the preference we used at Capital Park Hotel, to actually have a percentage or a number as specific as possible so that the people living in the interim shelter, in the shelter, and ultimately in the permanent housing are people who are homeless in the River District.
Mayor, can I ask you a question about that, please?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, because I support what you're saying. I think it's similar to what I was saying, too, that I've seen LaShelle do this in the past, where she really tries to identify people from that area. But I know that this particular funding source has a very narrowly tailored resolution. And I just want to make sure that we do the pass the motion in a way that we give her the direction to do what you're asking, Mayor, because I think it's really important. But without forcing her to place that in a resolution, that doesn't meet the criteria of what she's supposed to submit here in two days. So I guess, Ms. Dozier, I'm just asking you to clarify that for us. I know you can do what he's saying. And I'm just trusting you to do that, because I know that you will. But can you please tell us how to put that in a motion format for you that we don't mess up your resolution, but still give you that direction?
I think that it would be important to approve the resolution as presented. And then for us to come back, if we are awarded these funds, to really look at how we would include that in the eventual, you know, final documents for the project. So that way, then we can get this to the state and get approved and start working on, because we do feel that we'll be successful, of how we can incorporate what your desire is in. Because we've got to come back and then have that discussion.
That's fine with me, as long as it's clear that this is Councilmember Geta's amended motion. It's really the intent to bring it back with that kind of requirement and criteria. That's fine.
Yes, that would work.
Mayor, as the seconder on that, I would just say, I think that it creates a negative incentive for people to go to the River District to get this housing. And that compounds the issues that I think they raised. I really think it's not needing to be resolved at this particular moment. But I do think we should come up with a plan when we come back. And I have a very strong preference against a hard number right here. Because as my district has made itself open to the River District, and people go back and forth, what does it tell my residents who provide services if we create new housing nearby that they don't have access for our people experiencing homelessness? Maybe what it says is those people who are homeless should just go to the River District if they want to be housed. And I don't think that's what Councilmember Harris, although he can speak for himself, or the people called in opposed to this one.
Okay. Well, again, it's just an intent to come back. And we've stated our preferences in terms of what the comeback, I'd like to be as, you know, firm as possible. And I understand there might be different ways to go about approaching it. But it has to come back. And that's the intent, to try to create as strong a nexus as possible. What do you think, Vice Mayor Harris?
Mayor, thank you for letting me weigh in on this. You know, virtually everybody who's homeless in our area has been to or lived in the River District for a period of time at some point in their journey of being homelessness because of loves and fishes, because of the service provision in the area. You know, it's kind of a moving decimal point, if you will. Almost anybody could say they had been an inhabitant of the River District at one time. Councilmember Hanson raises an interesting point, and it has been raised by the River District Board, that if you say that you're going to house people from the River District, build it and they will come, right? It could easily go that way. Your intent here is noble, and I think it's admirable. Practically speaking, you're absolutely right. There are probably 2,000 people in and around the River District tonight. Finding 102 to put into housing is certainly doable. But there are, you know, legal roadblocks, and LaShelle has to walk a very narrow line to secure this funding. I think it is fair to promise the people in the River District that we will work, as you have said, and try to make it a policy decision moving forward that we will try to house people from the immediate area. There is this possibility that it could backfire, and people will come there thinking they're going to get housing. It's hard to tell the reality there. You know, I asked you for another word before the vote. I guess I'll just take it now. First, I'd like to thank my colleagues for your kind words about my efforts to reduce the homeless population in the city of Sacramento. Unfortunately, because of the COVID pandemic, it has skyrocketed. And the ground that we had gained over many years got lost in about three weeks. Not the least of which, and the impacts of which on the River District, have been caused by the county opening the jail to prevent a COVID outbreak and basically just putting hundreds of people on the streets, mostly in the River District, certainly in the first few days. And we've seen the spike in crime. My real problem here is that our toolkit is so limited in terms of addressing trash and crime and the impacts of homelessness, that I can't look anybody in the eye and say, I'm going to help you, and I'm going to help you in the next week. I fought for four years to try to curtail street feeding. Got no help from the EMD, got no help from the county. You know, and then today, the action of the county to deny home key money? It is problematic. You know, we really need to find a solution, a real solution. And we all know this, with the county moving forward, more and more, as Jay have said, we are becoming a social service agency, the city of Sacramento. It's not really our charge. And a lot of our constituents are very upset about it. On the other hand, practically speaking, we've got a homeless population that we need to deal with. You know, I want to reiterate, Chamberry is a great organization, as is Hope Cooperative. And this project has the best chance of succeeding of almost any project I've seen. To my friends in the River District, you know, it looks pretty clear that this is going to pass council. And in so many ways, it really should. We can't walk away from these resources. We have an opportunity here that's tremendous. But we need to focus on the things that we can do something about. We may not be able to get around the pandemic and Martin Boise, but we can pick up a lot more trash. And, you know, the River District deserves more attention on the issues that we can deal with. It was a heck of a stretch just to even get the city to move and motivate on the rat infestation. You know, I went out there at night, and these rats were crawling over my feet. You know, and I had to just shout and tear my hair. We did something about it. But it's difficult to address these issues. It shouldn't be so difficult. If we can pull down $12.5 million of state money, somehow, we can find more money to deal with the impacts of homelessness everywhere in the city. But the River District, again, is facing conditions that are really unbelievable. Mayor, you went and walked with me out there. You saw firsthand what's going on. It is, Seattle is dying in the River District. That's actually what we're facing. Meth epidemic, and, you know, it's pretty tough conditions. I just want my council colleagues to say out loud, as they approve this project, again, I think it'll be a great project, and I believe that SHRA will manage it very well, that we can get more resources for the River District to combat the impacts. You know, every council member can say that. Jay's got all kinds of problems under the freeway overpasses. There is Morrison Creek. I've got it, again, up in Steelhead Creek. Allen does, too. Lots of issues in Arcade Creek. It's everywhere in the city. We have to be more dynamic about dealing with and mitigating the problems surrounding homelessness. We get a kind of an F mark in that regard. We're just not getting it. So wherever we find the resources, we have to assure our constituents that we're not just going to let our city go down and start looking like Seattle with those same, you know, elevated issues that they're facing. We're in a unique position. Even though we have 5,500 unhoused, probably more now since the jail problem, that's such a small number compared to other West Coast cities. If we deal with mitigations and if we house more people, we have a chance of maintaining a way of life in our city that's very attractive. Right now, to many people, it feels like we're losing that battle. But I think that this council has to step up the game to make our city better. And certainly, the Meth Sobering Center is a small step. It's a very powerful step in the right direction. But all the other impacts, we've got to get busy. So Mayor, thank you for your comments. And thank you for the desire to turn this into a positive for the River District. I think at best, I can tell my friends in the River District that this won't be a negative. It's not going to, you know, devastate the area any more than what they're feeling right now. But, you know, I do have reservations. But I appreciate all the words that all my colleagues have said. This is a good project. And I agree with them that leaving resources on the table would be, you know, really a shame. We need to get busy. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. So we have two motions here. Let's, the first motion is the resolution as presented in the staff report with the additional intent by Councilmember Geta to bring back a further resolution to the city council that will address the best policy possible to ensure that we reduce the numbers of homeless people in the River District itself, the means to be recommended, debated, and ultimately decided.
When we want that policy to address any shelter, Metavee, not just the River District?
That's fine, sure. I mean, that's the intent with Metavee as well, is to first draw as many people from around the area as possible, absolutely. I remember stating that back when we had that discussion and debate a year ago. It's okay with me.
Mayor, I'm just going to beg this one more time. Can we please put that with the second motion so we can keep her first resolution clean? She has to have a clean resolution for the state funding. I agree with everything everyone said, but could we please put that on the second motion?
Okay. All right, that's fine. Let's take a vote on the motion as written then in the staff report on the specific project. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Ashby. Yes. Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Ains me, but no.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye, with a commitment to Councilmember Harris that I will step up my game to mitigate the impact.
Councilmember Carr?
Abstain.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. That motion passes. Now, the second motion is Councilmember Geta's motion authorized to request that the Housing Authority file a second application before Thursday in collaboration with the city to maximize our opportunity on the regional allocation out of the Project Home Key Fund to include manufactured housing and any other housing options. I would add to this motion, Councilmember Geta, the request that the agency come back when presenting on the Hawthorne project and any other project. The best nexus possible to ensure that the homeless in the geographic area around the new facility have access to these new opportunities. Okay? Councilmember Geta, is that a fair summation of your motion?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for encompassing all those pieces. And I want to take this time before we vote to thank our city staff, who, this is an aggressive timeline for the next two... this is an aggressive timeline for the next two days, three days, and it has been. So thank you to the city staff for the extra time over the weekend and the difficulty it's going to be to get them in within the next couple of days. So thank you.
Okay, and that's seconded by Councilmember Hanson, correct?
That's.
Okay, so let's call the roll on that second motion, please.
Mayor Protam Ashby?
Yes, just to be clear, Mayor, you included that the items would come back before moving forward, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, then yes.
Well, of course, all the items have to come back for approval, but this is to give the agency the direction to file a second application.
Right, to go after the money that the county left on the table with in one way or another.
And more.
And more.
Got it, yep, yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Warren?
Here, yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes, with a special thank you to LaShaw for sticking with us.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gadda?
Aye, thank you.
Councilmember Jennings?
Absolutely, aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Thank you all very, very much, and more to come next week. Good work. Housing Authority, LaShaw, good work to the City Council, good work to everybody.
Good work, LaShaw.
Okay, that's the end of the formal agenda. Are there council ideas and we have council ideas and questions?
We may, and I also have public comments for matters not on the agenda.
Okay, why don't we take that first? Public comments on matters not on the agenda, how many?
I have five callers in the queue.
Very good.
Mayor, could we do the council comments first? I have to go pick up our son from daycare.
Okay, sure. Council prerogative.
Sorry.
That's okay. Who would who would like to? I I know that.
Since Councilmember Hanson has to go, I'll let Councilmember Hanson go.
Go first.
Steve?
Thanks, I I would like our city staff to look into a report of prisoners being released from a correctional facility in Solano County and being transported in groups to Sacramento and downtown. We've had a few reports from residents and others about groups of people being dropped off. I I don't have as much information as I would like, and I I hope that PD and the city manager's office can look into this matter.
We'll do, we'll follow up on that and get back to you.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Gadda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank our economic development staff for the work that they've been doing on the Small Business Forgivable Loan Program. My understanding is that there it it was undersubscribed and there may be some capacity to go back out. I'd like the staff to look at a a program for small businesses in the cosmetology area. There's many of our our barbers. I know I've heard from my win and about a lot of the nail salons and who have were just shut down. And then even the hair cutting, uh, hair salons as well, uh, who have been suffering. And I think, you know, the talking to our code enforcement office, sounds like there are some easy fixes to allow them to to help their business to operate outside, such as shield, minor electrical changes. I think there are ways to help them in this closed down, dimming, working outside inside situation. So if the staff could look at that as an option to help many of our businesses in that area, greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I need.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Warren?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm too going to be signing off before we complete all everything this evening. But I wanted to just mention that Councilman Jennings is going to have a close in memory of a very special person. But also today is the 39th anniversary of my father's death. And so I'm going to sign off and go spend a little time with the family and think about good old times. So you guys, I'll see you, uh, see you when I see you. Bye bye.
Take care of yourself, Alan, we're thinking about you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask staff, the city manager, to put it on the lawn ledge log to bring back a discussion about banning fireworks in the city of Sacramento. You know, this has been talked about a couple of times over the years. This last year was particularly bad for illegal fireworks. And I think that it may be time to reinvigorate this discussion. An awful lot of people have contacted me about this. So I'd like to bring back the discussion, and if it looks favorable, then we'll move into building in ordinance. That's it, thank you.
Vice Mayor, I I think we have it on the log already. There this the staff is supposed to be bringing back that and others, what other cities have done as well on this this issue.
Well, that's great, then it's taken care of. I'll look forward to the discussion.
Anyone else, before we get to Councilmember Jennings, a couple of things for me. Number one, I want to wish our city attorney, Suzanne Alcala Wood, a happy birthday. I hope that you are celebrating and having a great, great day. And thank you to your for your service, a great service to our city. I also want to appoint a two by two for the performance evaluation of our SHRA Director LaShaw Dozier. This is a a formal part of of our process here. As as you know, the City Council doubles as the Housing Authority as we just as we just met, actually, in that context. I'd like to appoint Councilmember Rick Jennings and Mayor Protam Angelique Ashby as the city's representatives on the so-called two by two. I know the county will will appoint there too as well so that that can proceed as quickly as possible. I've talked to both Ms. Ashby and Mr. Jennings, and they're willing to serve. And so I thank you very much for your willingness to do so.
And Mayor, I also have an adjourned memory, but I'm thinking it may be the same as Mr. Jennings, so.
Mr. Withrow?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we let Mr. Jennings take the lead and then we'll?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Rick?
Okay, so it is the same, Jay, and we're talking about Frank Frank Withrow, who spent 33 years in the Sacramento Unified School District, 10 years at Sac High, and 23 years at McClatchy. And to know Frank is to love Frank, and you know him in a lot of different ways. So he was a teacher, an administrator, a mentor, definitely a change agent. He was an activist activist, a difference maker. He was an inspirational icon. He was a leader who led by example. He was an elder in the community that everybody looked up to. Of course, you know him as a poet and a publisher of more than 40 books. Many people call him the middle aged rapper. He is a Kappa man of his beloved fraternity, Kappa Alpha Psi. He was a husband to Karen, and he was a friend to everybody who knew him. And Frank left a lot of nuggets for us behind. But two that I want to share with you is he always said, no matter what, being somebody should be your goal, no matter what. Being somebody should be your goal. And the other one that that stays with me is it is your responsibility to secure knowledge and to deliver techniques from which to use that knowledge wisely. And everybody he would come in contact with, he would share those nuggets with them. And he left books and poems and and calendars and T-shirts and everything possible for you to be able to see that Frank made a difference to everybody that he touched. And so I want to adjourn in memory of Frank Withrow and give our love to Karen and his entire family on the passing of Frank Withrow.
Jay?
Yeah, I I don't think I can add a whole lot to that, Rick. You know, I I certainly knew him from my days on the school board. And we didn't always agree on everything, but I I can't imagine a person who cared more about their community and cared more about young people in our community. And so I just wanted to pass along my condolences to Karen. I would ask the, you know, in the in these times when we so desperately need people who are so committed to Sacramento and so committed to to lifting up their communities, I would ask the city manager if we could honor Frank by flying the flag at half mast for a day or two. I don't know what our exact policy is on that, but if there was ever a community member who deserved that, he certainly does. So I would make that request to the city manager. Thank you.
We'll we'll take a look.
I'd like to add on to that. I don't know when I met Frank, he was one of those people where you always knew him. There wasn't a time when you didn't know him. And he came across like that. I could it could have been 100 Black Men where he was a a member of when I was on that 100 Black Men Committee. Frank would occasionally dress up in flashy suits. He'd have a red suit, he'd have a lime green suit, and he could pull it off. I don't think I could pull it off. Frank could pull it off dressing like that. But I went to several events with Frank when he had to engage young people. And if you go into an auditorium with a a group of 200, 300 kids sitting on the cafeteria floor and think, how are you going to get any type of message across where Frank could do it? He'd make up poems, he'd make up rap songs, he'd have the kids repeating after him. They got his, they received his message. He got it across every single time. And he and his wife Karen Massey, who's a a star in her own right as a TV reporter, have just been stalwarts in our community. So it's a heavy heart we have with losing Frank. And our condolences to Karen. And thank you, Karen, for sharing Frank with us for so many years.
I'd like to add on too, Mayor. As the Sac High alumni on this council, I would be remiss not to say that Mr. Withrow is the legendary teacher for the Dragons. He, his reputation stands alone, unprecedented at Sac High. Anybody goes there knows who that is. And I saw him not too long ago, maybe just a couple of months ago, and I was that old soul with Jay King. And and we saw Mr. Withrow coming from his beloved barber over there and headed to see Mama Rose at her bookstore. And I just, you know, it's it will not be the same, Councilmember Chenier, to go to Oak Park and not see him walking around and doing his thing, talking to all of his former students. He literally knows everyone in Oak Park that went to Sac High for the last umpteen decades. I don't even know. What a great human being. And just to be around him even for a few minutes is to have your spirit lifted. And so Ricky did a great job, and Larry, you too, and Jay honoring him. But that man has been a person who has lifted up kids in Oak Park and from Sac High for, I don't even know how long, but we're lucky he chose Sacramento to be his home.
So the last thing I'll say, just in closing, he had such an impact on his students and everybody that he touched. They did a, his former students did a Zoom call to let him know how much they loved him and the difference that he had made in their life and that they went to college because of him or they were the difference makers in their family. They were the change agents in their community because of him. And then there was a drive by celebration spearheaded by our own Lynette Hall. And in that drive by celebration, over 400 cars drove by his house, honking their horn, yelling their love out for him, just really acknowledging the difference that he made. 400 cars and probably over 1,000 people in all of those cars. So I I just think this is a great tribute to a man who was truly a difference maker, someone who dedicated his life to impacting others. And so this is closing out in honor of Frank Withrow.
Thank you very, very much. Life well lived, wow, what an impact. We do have five.
We have six callers.
Six callers. But we will adjourn in memory of Frank Withrow and and see if we can fly the flag at at half mast as well.
Thank you, first caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Robert Cobb, I live in District 4, Cindy Katie, Venezuela District. Uh, one, you should not have any city council meetings at 2 o'clock when the county board is supervising. It can happen their meeting. Because I couldn't watch half the meeting because the county board was having their meeting. Two, Mayor Steinberg may be a a skilled politician, but he does not listen to the public on anything. Three, what are you going to put the rent control ballot measure on November's election? You just told 40 some thousand people, screw you. We don't have to put it on. I mean, is this the city council we want in Sacramento? No, we want a city council that listens to the public. And my last comment, what are you going to have a comprehensive plan to help the homeless population and build affordable housing? And plus, uh, keep people in their homes, uh, opinion eviction crisis? We're going to have a Sacramento because of COVID-19? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Steinberg and and city council members. My name is Tommy Young, District 2. I've been up a few times in regards to the Launchpad. And thank you for the the creative grant, the 25,000. We've also been the, I guess, the poster child for the program because we, the Launchpad was the photo everybody sees for the last two years on the Facebook side. I'm I'm calling tonight with not good news because and I want to make sure that this comes across as a as a question and a plea and not just a a comment because I've gotten notice from the city that I'm, I guess I'm being evicted, and I have until Monday to get everything off the Launchpad lot or it will be confiscated and sold at auction that they'll send me an invitation to. And while I understand the eviction process and you guys got to do what you got to do, I don't understand that there's been no communication with the court system at all. So there's no unlawful detainment, there is no, there's just a a letter that says, we will confiscate all of your stuff on Monday unless it's moved. So I've I've been paying the smudged bill for the last, I think, over two years. I've installed security cameras, I've I've done all of these things. The building has been vacant for 15. I've been there for three. The real estate agent indicated that they wouldn't even be showing it until 16 days after the state of emergency was. So I'm trying to get a little bit more time because, and this is this is not an excuse, but my father went missing about a month ago, his body was found last week. I've been dealing with that. And now I've got 96 hours to leave it or lose it. And they valued everything at less than $4,200. And yet I have receipts and IRS documents showing.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yep, so my last question is, are you guys going to really make me fight this out in court? Because your your pockets are way, way deeper than mine. And is there anybody I can talk to?
Is there anybody that the caller can talk to?
What we can is we'll take his number and I'll have somebody follow up.
Okay, we'll have somebody follow up tomorrow, okay?
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi there, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Stuart Gow, I'm a resident of District 2. And I'd like to comment, it sounds like you'll be looking at other motel sites for funding as well as the River District. And as a resident of Woodlake, I've had to manage, living next to Surestay for the last few months. It seems that Woodlake is mentioned again and again when it comes to placing homeless shelters. We've had railroads, Evergreen is still on the table. We have the new development of Lumberjack, and the Armory is on the table also, all for affordable and supportive housing. Woodlake's a small, quiet, family neighborhood. We've already taken quite a burden. We've had to cope with the impact of Surestay through the coronavirus, which has been very, very difficult for us. And really, there's not been a net improvement for Woodlake, in fact, it's worse. Surestay's been a magnet for homelessness, it's been a magnet for meth-related crimes. We have children playing in the park next to Surestay residents smoking meth, that's a new thing. It really is bringing crime into people's backyards. We've had personal attacks, fires, property damage. I'd encourage you to, I want to reiterate what Bernice Krieger said, actually, please do look at the county's experience of running this shelter here, because it's not been good. And they've made great efforts to increase security measures, but it really still, it's still a huge problem. We don't have the infrastructure to support the needs of this homeless population. We don't have transport, we don't have street lighting, we don't have sidewalks.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, sure. I sent a letter to the city council, we collected 78 signatures from the neighborhood, four hours from people who have felt the impact of basically what's an...
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Again, this is Bernice Krieger. I want to thank Mayor Steinberg for acknowledging that it is not NIMBYism to be concerned about disproportionate levels of homeless individuals to the property owner from the River District. However, I do want to point out, as Stuart said, our area is four, maybe five streets by maybe 10 streets. We're a tiny neighborhood. There are two immediate business properties in our neighborhood, a hotel, which is currently a shelter, and a restaurant that's a shelter. So, while we do not have anywhere near the levels of the River District, we do have per capita disproportionate levels of homeless individuals. And I agree with Councilmember Harris that if you build it, they would come. That was my specific concern with a railroad property. I can assure you that close to 100% of the homeless people in the Surestay Hotel were not in Woodlake before. We did not have homeless individual in the streets. I'm glad that we are able to house them, however, this particular location, because of where it is, we do not have the resources. Unlike Hawthorne, our neighbors are Stuart, John, Stacy, Annie, Taylor, Dale, Millie, Nancy, and these are actual people that live next to this facility. You have California Highway Patrol, Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, you have services, you have a charging station. I'm looking at the same map that Councilmember Harris pulled up. The people that are backed up to the Hawthorne Hotel that share a tent are not actual individual people that are having to experience sleeping at night next to this shelter. And again, if you guys are gonna look at it, please look at it from our perspective. I have invited Eric Yara to come to the location of Evergreen to just get an idea of why it wouldn't work out. Daylight Autograph is adjacent to Hawthorne. Nancy had her backyard broken into by a woman. So, again, this isn't...
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Yep. I just want to have Steinberg say that if this is NIMBYism, it's for people that own residential property, it's our backyard, sir. This is people's business properties in the River District.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, Richard Wake, City Council, District Five. First thing I want to say is I totally agree with what Councilmember Harris said earlier about getting busy. There's a huge problem in City Council, District Five, that I made Councilmember Chenier aware of many, many times over the past few weeks. And the issue is, is on Riverside Boulevard, south of 35th Avenue, we have a houseboat that's been camped out down by Brookfield School. We have two motorhomes that are parked south of the bike trail entrance on Riverside Boulevard. There's also a huge homeless encampment on the river, north of 35th Avenue, that's camped out on the levee. These people are digging holes in the levee, burying their feces, stirring trash all over the street. Last week, a couple weekends ago, myself and three other, four other neighbors, spent two hours cleaning Seamus Avenue from Riverside Boulevard all the way down to Brookfield School. It's now a pigsty again. Okay, homes are being broken into. One of the neighbors that lives in Steve Hanson's district told me over the phone that Steve Hanson refuses to talk to this woman about the problems of people coming onto the levee. Her house has been burglarized twice. My next-door neighbor's car window was smashed. Car windows are getting smashed on Woodshire Way. These problems are overlapping severely into District City Council Four, Five, and Seven. And, you know, to say that nothing can be done because of the county directive, I just saw on, from Black Zeaper Productions, that the Sheriff's Impact Team removed the homeless encampment from Carmichael, and the one over on Stockton Boulevard, the Caltrans cleaned up. So, the notion that you can't do anything is a lie. Councilmember Chenier, you need to get work with the other city council members and clean up that area, get the trash cleaned up, get that houseboat and motorhomes off of Riverside Boulevard, and get this area cleaned up. I am all for safe ground camping, retreating people respectfully, but if this was your $250,000...
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, if this was any of your $250,000 investments in your home, in your area, you would have taken care of this a long time ago. Get the area cleaned up, I'm not quitting until you're done.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. And this is our final caller. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, yes, my name is Lambert of To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes, and District Two, specifically Del Paso Heights. I wanted to make a couple of announcements to the mayor, the city council, and even the city manager's office. We are in negotiation with a major bakery in Sacramento to mass-produce our cheesecakes, so now I have completed the logistics of having our cheesecakes produced, stored, and the ability to deliver throughout the city. I've also been endorsed by a group called Fizzin' SAC, F-I-Z-Z-N-I-N-S-A-C dot com, a wonderful millennial group. I never heard of them. They took our cheesecakes viral recently. I also wanted to say that with all of this in our favor, we are now requesting that the city council and the mayor approach the city manager about funding us, because we are the epitome of an early win, we're also the epitome of inclusive economics, and I want to also acknowledge Mr. Warren's father. As a person who was born and raised in Del Paso Heights, he was an icon to us. When we were growing up there, my brother and I were great ballplayers in the Grant Little League, and when I was gone to college, he was killed while I was gone, and I just heard him mention that, and I wanted to go on record and pay my respects. His father was a tremendous icon in Del Paso Heights. He was a person that knew my father, and they both were from Arkansas, and they moved here in the 40s. That's why I'm fighting for what I'm doing, because there's some tremendous people that helped us get to where we are. And so, to the Warren family, I want to pay my respects for that and acknowledge his father. He was a wonderful human being.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, fund To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes proposal, thank you.
Thank you for comments. I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
So, thank you. We are going to postpone the closed session, and so this will end the meeting in memory of great educator and great community leader, Frank Withrow, and let us also remember tonight in memory Alan Warren's dad, 19 years. We are adjourned, thank you.